Okay. I will open tonight's Lunenburg Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 at 6:32 PM. And I will entertain a motion to go directly into executive session. To return to open session, the motion is to enter executive session or back into open session after exiting executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, "To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position and the chair or vice chair in this case so declares." And it is to discuss the FIRE union contract. So is that moved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Mr. Jeffries is en route, so he will be joining us when he can. But otherwise, right now, we will go into executive session to the booth. Please turn us off air and we will return to open session when we are completed. Thank you.
Now. To the booth, this, are you on Zoom? Okay, I see him now.
So the Select Board is now out of executive session, back into our regular session. Today is Tuesday, April the 4th, 2023. It's approximately 7:12 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with equal rights and liberty, and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Right. Do we have any public comments this evening? We'll start with the public, from the public.
Good evening, guys. Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Last week, I listened eagerly to the investigative work of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board to ascertain exactly when the third and fourth quarter tax bills were mailed. Thank you both. Please confirm that Town Council has contacted DOR to finalize this effort, and that a townwide mailing is being prepared now to inform residents of this finding and the impact on the abatement process. My questions tonight are, when will the investigators put this level of effort into ascertaining how the 135% land value increase for waterfront properties was determined, including how the 2020 sales were used to support it? And finally, why wasn't the Department of Revenue requirement to use 24 months of qualified sales followed? And how would this have impacted the increase in land assessment? All of this information is critical to the abatement process. All of this information resides in the Principal's Assessor's Office downstairs in this very building. At the last Select Board meeting, the Town Manager mentioned that she had asked the Principal Assessor for information on the calculation of the land assessment. To get to the bottom of this, all the factors mentioned above must be revealed and understood. Is this in process, and when will that information be revealed, made open to the public? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. I guess this is the opportunity to pose this question. My name is Chip Gershaw. I'm a resident of Shirley, but I own property in Lunenburg on 104 Laurel Lane, on Lake Whalen. And I was just wondering if anyone can tell me now, or maybe later this can be explained, the process with the abatements. I was at the meeting in January at the school. I received my tax bill, which is, you know, doubled. I filed an abatement, and then the inspector came out a week ago Sunday and inspected my property. And when I said, what's next? He said, what's next is that the assessors, you know, deliberate on the applications before them. So I came to the Town Hall yesterday to ask the assessors if they knew when that was going to happen, so that I could be there. They said they have no idea when it's going to happen. There was over 400 abatements filed, and that they're going to try to do them in groups of 40 or 50 at a time. And so I said, well, what should I plan to be able to, you know, I wanted, I thought I could be present when it happened. Then they said that they, all the abatements by law are voted in executive session, and it doesn't seem to be an opportunity, but this is what I'm here for, to ask, for the applicant that filled out the abatement to be present to be able to answer questions or to be able to, you know, explain questions that might come up. In other words, I'm not a professional abatement filler-outer, you know what I mean? I, you know, I actually called a lawyer to help me, and the lawyer said, we don't do abatements, there's not enough money in them. So I did it myself, but I did take benefit to your workshop that you had next door here, which was helpful, you had real estate folks help me go through it. But because I think I have reasons for relief, I don't know if they are reasons for relief, and if, you know, I don't want to just have my abatement come back stamped denied without any explanation as why I'm wrong. I want someone to convince me I'm wrong about the things that I feel are legitimate reasons for an abatement. And so I don't know if you can share any information on how that process will be. I realize you have a mountain of applications, or the Board of Assessors do. I know there's a, I guess, a 90-day window supposedly by law that these are supposed to be acted on. Then I heard, well, I guess the assessors maybe with the concurrence of the applicants, you know, can extend that out. Not sure how it's going to play out. Maybe you're not all sure either, but I did want, have an opportunity to, you know, defend, you know, my reasons why I think I should be granted relief versus just finding out they didn't get relief. Now, I suppose if all the abatements are stamped approved, then nobody has any questions. But I'm assuming that's not maybe going to happen. So I would, at least, you know, I would like to be able to do that, and I don't know what the process is going to be, so.
Yeah, the simple answer is that your questions really have to go to the Board of Assessors. Later on tonight, we will be meeting with them. This is one of the things, before we get into the investigation, that we will ask for some clarification on.
Yeah.
In terms of what that process is, you know, this board has moved to support the Board of Assessors by hiring additional support who can provide those assessments. And I don't have a clear answer yet for, you know, the dates that they're going to be evaluating, the different applications that they received. And certainly, I'm sure if you've watched our previous meeting, I think there's been a level of frustration expressed by this board, but hopefully tonight, we will have some clarity on that.
Well, actually, when I was here yesterday, they told me the assessors were going to meet today at 3 o'clock, so I planned to go.
Yep.
And when I pulled up the calendar, it said canceled. It said there was a joint meeting with the Select Board, so that's why I'm here now. I don't know if that's the appropriate time to talk to the assessors about something, because it seems like a joint meeting. I don't know what your agenda is exactly with them, and whether it's that same issue or not.
Yeah, it's a question that will come up. We'll make sure we bring that up. It's not, when we meet with them, it is a joint meeting.
Yeah.
And we don't have public comments scheduled during that time, but we will, you know, you're asking the question now, they're here in attendance, so we'll make sure we answer that question.
I appreciate that if you pass along, and I certainly will look at the calendar and attend a assessors' meet at some point, but.
Okay. I think that question that you're asking is a question that many people want to know the answers to.
Yeah, well, I just, I guess, I think, I would assume most people want to be able to defend their, you know, their.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Their application.
I don't think the process is intended to be interactive. I think it is, it is a bit of a, I think there's opportunity for it to be, but I don't think it's intended to be like an interactive, where it's like a hearing.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's the intent, you know, but hopefully till later tonight, we get some clarity.
That's the question, because if you filled out, you know, people filled out the application for the abatement, if, then it goes behind closed doors and gets denied, what, you know, the next step, I guess, is this appellate court, which is, you know, a costly path, perhaps. But I think they need to understand what it is, the reason is for the denial.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if I'm wrong about where I think I have wetlands, or where I, you know, I have easements, I have things that I think diminished below what the new assessment is, then I want someone to convince me that, you know, I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but I don't know if I don't get a chance to talk to somebody.
Yeah, I think it's clear what you're asking.
Yeah.
You're asking for an explanation one way or the other.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
It's related to questions.
Yeah.
I can answer a couple of questions based on information I learned up today. The company doing the inspections, they've gone through about approximately 207 inspections. So they're working through their recommendations currently, and will be proposing those to the assessors at a future meeting. The timeline, they're estimating would be approximately April 23rd. They'll be away for a week, so they're losing a week's time for work, but they're working towards that and making all efforts to do this as expeditiously as possible. And the, and this will be brought up later in the meeting, the Assessor's Office is sending out extension letters as some of these applications are becoming due, and the property owners have the, it's their right to request or agree to an extension. So I would encourage people to look for that if you know your application is coming to its 90-day window. And regarding the mailing of the tax bills, this will be a discussion later as well. That decision, as deemed with conversations with DOR and Town Council, is, there's a two-part decision. The date of the mailing, because the person responsible for the collection of taxes determines the day of the mailing. the day of the mailing, which determines when those tax bills are due. And the treasure collector has determined, based on the information provided, and there is enough doubt about the contradictory evidence between the postal service states and the affidavit of mailing from our billing company, that she will be relying on the January 6th date as the date of mailing. So what that means in essence is that the third and fourth quarter bills will be due May 1st, 2023, and no interest is due on third quarter taxes between the period of February 1st and May 1st.
Mr. Chair.
I just want to give the opportunity to close out public comments, and then we'll switch over to board. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Any online? Mr. Alonso.
I just wanted to respond to the, to the last public speaker that, so state law is silent on how abatement hearings are handled, so they are completely within the purview of the Board of Assessors about how they handle them. And your attendance, your desire to be in attendance is really up to their policy, and hopefully tonight, during the joint meeting, it will be, they will share with everybody what they determine they want to do and how they want to do it. But there's no requirement, but there's also no prohibition from the state that you can or can't be there for an abatement hearing, so.
Okay. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
No.
I have none.
I just have one. I just want to thank everybody who, all the volunteers who worked at Marshall Park for the cleanup day on Sunday. You know, all those efforts and the continuing efforts for other, other days this, this month for Earth Day are greatly appreciated as people clean up all the debris from all the storms and lots of branches and broken twigs all over the place. So thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso, for that. And I want to tack one of that and just encourage everyone, you know, to take a look at the roadside nearest to you, you know, where everyone is always surprised at just how much trash they can pick up on the side of the road. So I would encourage you that if you look at the area between you and your neighbors, to take that time, and if you're able to, on a good weekend day, less, a little less traffic, and try to see what you can do, and that, you know, goes a long way, goes a very long way. All right, we are finished with public comments. Before we go to announcements, Carol. We do have a communication from another board. Carol, Chair of the School Committee. If you wouldn't mind sharing the slide.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to come this evening. What I wanted to talk about this evening is school transportation, and I know it was a discussion point in the community and also on this board in the fall, and we said that the chaotic way that it developed at the end of last summer would not be repeated. So I wanted to share with this board and with the community so that everybody understands what is going on with the busing, our new policy. The state requires all K-6 students living greater than two miles be bused. No requirement is there for students grade seven to 12. Of course, we need to do better than that. So using the buses we currently have, we can bus all K-6 students. So all students in grade K to six are eligible to be bused regardless of where they live. We don't have space for all seven to 12 students. The little guys can squish in three to a seat. There's less kids, because we're talking sixth grades versus seventh, seven grades on those runs, because the sixth graders ride with the older kids. So many of these students do drive. We developed what we believe to be a fair way to get our students safely to school. The new policy wants to maximize the effectiveness of what we have. We only have so many buses. We want to make sure that each bus is full as needs to be, and that they run effectively. We want to address the safety concerns by busing as many students as possible. We had some parents who suggested that kids within a half a mile could walk to school. That is probably the most dangerous half a mile. If you've ever walked on North Field Road, as, as you come towards the Turkey Hill School, Mr. Jeffrey joined us one day when we did that, and the police officer with us was totally consumed keeping us adults safe, never mind the children. And of course, there are no sidewalks east of the school on Mass Ave. So it did not make sense to do it in a manner that talked about mileage. So we needed to make sure that we did not have a stressful end of the summer. So what we have decided to do, we worked on this policy from September through to voting on it in mid-March. There is a new form. It went home to parents via email several different ways. They, they were probably called as well, I'm not sure, but everybody needs to fill it out on time by May 1st. If you fill out your bus form or transportation form by May 1st, you will be bused, no problem. The eligibility is not based on distance from the school. Now, if you choose to, for whatever reason, you have problems getting this form done on time, you, if you submit it in mid-June, let's say, then we have 60 business days to figure out how to get you on a bus. It's not going to be crazy, quick, everybody drop everything, nobody knows what's going on. It's very orderly and organized. The bus company needs to develop their routes. That needs to be done between May and, say, the end of June. They get the bus routes all put together. If we don't know who the kids are, they can't make the route, and that is the need for the May 1st requirement. We have in the policy an outreach spot where if the school knows there are parents that has, that have difficulty with computers, if there are parents that have difficulty with language, if there are parents that just have difficulty getting forms in on time, the school secretaries will call them and make sure that they know this needs to be done in a timely manner, so that they are not left behind. The other thing is if a parent's circumstances should change. Suppose the 1st of August, a parent has a shift change in their working circumstance and can no longer drive the kids to school they thought they could. That's an emergency, they're right on the bus. So we've worked very hard to try and make this work. The only possible glitch would be grade seven to 12. If those seats fill up somehow, it would be, they would be filled by first come, first served, or the date stamp on the application submitted. The only way they're going to fill up is if all the kids, the 100 kids that every year get parking passes, all decide they need to ride the bus. That's not likely, we all know that, but we can't promise them all seats, so we have to have some kind of way of assigning those seats should that happen. So it's, we're trying something new, it's something different, it's not perfect, but a lot of thought went into this, and we're going to see how it works out. So the complete policy is on the front page of the school website, if anyone wants to look at it, lunenburgschools.net. It's right on the front page, so there's a link to it. And that's the story. I don't know if anybody had any questions, but we're working really hard, because that's not going to happen again, what happened last fall.
I just wanted, we did get a call over the weekend, and they want parents to fill out the form even if they're not going to use the bus.
Yes.
Just that way they at least acknowledge that they received it. So even if their kid is driving the school, they should fill it out and say they're not going to be transported.
That's, that, thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sroka, that's very important, because then we know those kids are accounted for. And we're hopeful, because as of today, the form went out on April 1st, as of today, we have 854 forms in. So that's a good start.
I want to thank you, because obviously you listened to everybody who had issues last year, and it's nice to see it being, you know, formulated into what seems to be a very clear and thoughtful process and policy. So thank you to you and the School Department and the rest of the School Committee.
Well, thank you very much. And at the end of the school year, we will survey the parents, we will look at it again the following fall, in case there were things that we didn't think of that did come up. So, and thank you for the time to put this on the air in case people haven't seen it.
Thank you, Carol. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Going to announcements. Do we have any other, any other communications from other boards?
No other communications.
Okay. Announcements tonight. We have the Earth Day.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yep, sure. The Earth Day through, as a combination effort of the Lunenburg Conservation Commission and the Park Commission, and those, the dates on the QR code are all different dates that you can sign up for cleanup of the different parks. All the areas in town include the Veterans Park, Lane Property, the Library, Town Pound, Proctor Park, Pollinator Habitat, and the Wallace Playground. So those dates are from April 8th to the 23rd on that QR code.
All right. Thank you, Heather. Doing everything we can to keep our community clean. All right, so we're going to go to our appointments that we're a little late for, so let's start with our 7:10 request from the Lions Club for a toll booth on April the 29th. Good to see you, Corinne.
Good evening. Corinne Scouten, 116 Island Road, President of Lunenburg Lions Club and the Lunenburg Food Pantry. We're here tonight, and we put in our request through the Town Manager's Office to have a voluntary toll on Saturday, April 20th and 29th, from 8:00 a.m. till noon. And you know, we've done this in the past, we have it down pretty well. We've been in touch with the police and the DPW Director, and they've signed off on it as well. So just here for your blessing, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, so while everyone's just checking this again, do we have any questions tonight for the applicant?
It's just a rain or shine. It's rain or shine?
Unfortunately. But we'll be there. Yeah. Unless conditions warrant, you know, safety issues, and then of course, we'll postpone.
Yeah. Okay. If there's any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move that we approve the request for the toll booth at, for the Lions Club for April 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Town Center and on School Street for trailer collection as applied.
Second.
Second.
All right, is there any additional discussion on this? All right, so meetings are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed know the motion passes.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Make sure you check in with Elaine.
I will. Good luck.
Okay. So we have a presentation on the annual town meeting article from the Land Use Director. We also requested Personnel Committee Representatives and Historical Commission Representatives. Let's start with the Land Use Director. Is he with us tonight? I know I saw a note on this.
Actually, because the board already voted on this recommendation, I thought we were all set.
For the self-storage?
Yeah, that was pretty straightforward.
So, I know.
All right, gaining back some time.
Yeah.
All right. Who do we have from the Personnel Committee with us this evening?
Donna Fortune.
Oh, Donna. Good to see you.
And Sue Andrews.
All right, if you wouldn't mind, just both stating your names. So Donna and Sue, all right?
Nancy and Sue. Good evening.
Good evening.
Donna Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive, and Sue Andrews, 81 Horizon Island Road, current members of the Lunenburg Personnel Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present and discuss the 2024 budget impacts within the Salary Administration Plan, or SAP. The SAP covers approximately 85 employees, 34 position titles. The titles include several department heads, seasonal staff, part-time staff, on-call firefighters, and non-grandfathered reserve police. The Personnel Committee has been working over the last 18 months on job descriptions and job classifications and compensation. This was a much bigger task than our five-member committee could handle. We worked with the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, and the Town Manager to obtain an outside consultant company to analyze the SAP job descriptions and job classifications. The Town Manager located funding $9,300 within the current fiscal budget to cover the cost of this project. Mary Beth Bernard, HR Key Solutions, is an HR consultant with broad experience in municipal compensation planning. Mary Beth attended our November meeting and gave an overview of how the project would proceed. She responded to various queries about her specific plans and the tight timing of the project. Our goal was to get something in on the spring town meeting. The timeline begins with an official start of 11/28/22. She had confidence that the project would be completed on time with a 2/15/23 completion date. The scope of work was as follows: To conduct a compensation and classification study of approximately 45 active Lunenburg SAP positions and approximately nine clerical positions to include: Evaluation of the current job descriptions for the purpose of classification and compensation; Conduct interviews and revise position descriptions as necessary; Establish comparable communities and conduct salary survey; Review the current compensation plan and analysis of the midpoint differentials and the range spreads; Compare Lunenburg's current compensation plans to determine internal equity; Draft a classification plan with recommended grades for each position; And provide a final report. The estimated timeframe for the project was November 28th, 2022, to February 15th, 2023. The project is to be billed in three installments of $3,100, December 15th, January 15th, and February 15th. We are still working with Mary Beth and are about 75% complete. The last installment will be withheld until the project is completed, so that February payment has not gone out. At our March 22nd meeting, the committee voted to recommend that the salary compensations, steps, and grades continue to be worked on and presented at the special fall town meeting. We discussed the COLA increase, and after discussion, voted to include that with the special town meeting as well in the fall. However, the committee and the administration revisited that at the March 27th meeting and decided it was imperative that the employees receive their COLA due on 7/1/23. At our March 27th meeting, the committee voted for a 2.5% COLA increase effective on 7/1/23 for all employees within the Salary Administration Plan. The total impact of the 2.5% COLA is $38,095.13. This was presented to the Lunenburg Finance Committee at their March 30th meeting and approved unanimously. So we're asking for your approval tonight for a 2.5% COLA increase.
All right. Heather, if you wouldn't mind reminding me, what article are we talking about?
It's T.
T? I think I was just adding.
Could you please repeat the impact dollar amount again?
Sure. It's $38,095.13.
So in the board's draft warrant, the numbers, letters changed to numbers now, and the order slightly changed, so I would look at the booklet, and that should be harder.
Yep.
Article 9.
All right, so in the booklet, it's Article 9?
Oh, it's Article 9.
Yeah, in the booklet, Article 9.
Got it.
Thank you, Heather.
Yep, that's right.
What are your preliminary, while we're waiting for the rest of the board, what are your preliminary findings in terms of where we're at with SAP? Are we looking at a more substantial increase come the fall?
If there's an increase in the fall, I don't know yet, but anything that we do between, before the fall or at the fall town meeting would be recognized in the new SAP grid at that time and would account for this.
Okay. Okay? Yes?
When was the last increase and what was its magnitude?
It was FY '20, 2%. 2% FY '21, '22, and, and '23, 2%.
2%.
It's been 2%.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from the board related to this? All right, even in the absence of your presentation, the Select Board has already voted to recommend approval of this? Five to zero.
You mean to get up here and do all that?
Oh, that's finance. I'm sorry.
We have not, we have not voted.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I'm reading, I'm reading the notes incorrectly, so we are.
It's not even April 1st.
We are going to have to vote. All right.
Help that along, Mr. Chair. I will say, I would recommend that the Select Board recommend approval of the article as presented by the Personnel Committee.
Second, any additional discussion? So meetings are in favor of the
I will say I would recommend that the Select Board recommend approval of the article as presented by the Personnel Committee.
Second. Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Four to zero. The motion is recommended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna.
I have a question. Are you guys looking for more members? Did you guys, you lost a member? Did you gain anybody? Yeah, on personnel, right? You, you, do you have an opening?
We have one opening.
One opening?
Yeah.
Okay.
So anyone out there who's interested with a good experience, wants to help out, Personnel Committee for you. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. And who do we have this evening from the Historical Commission?
Mr. Lasco.
Mr. Lasco. Yes. It's Bill, right?
Yes.
All right. So similarly, Bill, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and who you're accompanied with, and then a brief presentation, we're going to pass on the handouts.
I am C. William Laxo, resident of 30 Prospect Street. I am the Vice Chairman of the Historical Commission, and I have an assistant with me this evening.
Jennifer Sanderson, 848 Northfield Road, Lunenburg. I'm also with the Historical Commission.
All right.
And I'm his ears.
Yes, I have great difficulty hearing in this facility, so. The office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth through the Massachusetts Historical Commission maintains an inventory of historic homes, buildings, parks, cemeteries, and when the local Historic Commission was formed, all of the historic buildings and so forth within the district were added to that database at the, at the Historical Commission estate. There are many more such buildings and facilities and architectural features locally that we feel should be added to the inventory. All of the communities in the state participate in this and we hope that Lunenburg will continue to put on record all of these historical sites. To accomplish that, we need to file a letter of intent with the Historical Commission in, in November of the year. The survey is a 50/50 sharing with funding coming from the, well, okay, from the government, let's say. The Office of the Interior, the Department of the Interior, right? I'm sorry. When you're reaching 93, 94 years of age, it's senior moments.
Well, congratulations on that.
So we, we would like to file a letter of intent in November to apply for a $25,000 grant. It's a 50/50 proposition. Upon completion of the survey, $12,500 comes back to the town. So it's a very modest amount for a very valuable asset, so. In a nutshell, that's our plea.
All right. I think that's really straightforward. So $25,000, you want to do a 50/50 with the Department of Interior to get the other 50%? All right. Any questions for the applicant?
The dates on this paper that he gave us, the pre-application letter of intent deadline says November 14th of 2022. The invitation says December 14th of 2022. So is that supposed to say 2023?
What I passed out, advance the year by one because this is, okay, this will be fiscal year 2024.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Just comment for the board, the original wording said within the town's historic district, and that's incorrect. It's within the town. So that was changed to be within the town.
Mr. Chair, I just want to offer my support to this. I think it's overdue to definitely inventory those houses that have historic importance, buildings, properties, et cetera, that have importance. So I think I fully support the article.
This is my second run hearing this because I was at the Finance Committee meeting last Thursday, so I'm still in support of it.
He's in support. He was at the Finance Committee.
Okay.
All right, Bill. So straightforward, on this one, I'm correct. The board has already voted four to zero to support this. So you are good to go. So you have the support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Let's go home.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations to the Town Manager.
There's two appointments by the board.
What am I doing?
You want me to start with the ratification first? Okay. Asking the board to ratify my appointment of alternate electrical inspector, Baron Bowser. Mr. Bowser was recommended by our electrical inspector, John Beery, who is the current, he's the current electrical inspector. And Mr. Bowser has many years of experience working for his own company and a company called Piper Electrical previously to that, and is a qualified Massachusetts Master Electrician. So he becomes highly recommended with years of experience, asking you to appoint, ratify his appointment tonight.
Okay. Yes.
I will say that I know Mr. Bowser and he's done electrical work at my property many years ago. So he's, his work has been excellent. He's excellent to work with. I'm very glad to, hopefully at the end of this vote, see him on board as the, as the Assistant Electrical Inspector. So I fully support his nomination or the appointment of the Town Manager.
I have to say, I just love, like the name Baron.
I know him too.
And my father was, was an Earl, so yeah, makes. Any other comments, questions?
I move that we approve the, or ratify the Town Manager's appointment of the alternate electrical inspector, Baron Bowser, as presented.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. So congratulations to Mr. Baron Bowser on that. All right. So now we have two appointments this evening. We're going to start with our appointment to the Agricultural Commission. I want to make sure I pronounce the last name correctly, but Jacqueline, is it Shabbat? Shabot. Okay. So if you wouldn't mind coming forward, identifying your interest in being appointed, any experience you have related to this? I think I know what you're going to say.
You think you, I know what you're going to say. Jackie Shabot, 40 Page Street. I am the co-owner of In the Meadow Farm, small alpaca farm here in town. I'm looking to be appointed to the AgCon because I have a really great interest in farming and promoting the farming community here in the town.
Okay.
Was that what you expected I was going to say?
It is.
With the company logo and sweatshirt.
There you go.
Have you ever been there? Have you been there? I've been there. Many times, many times.
Many times.
No.
Yeah.
I know where it's at, though, so.
Oh, you should go visit.
I should walk through the woods with my goats.
Yeah.
Pay a visit.
There you go.
Yeah. Or you should do some felting.
Right.
That's so fun.
Do we have any, any questions for the applicant today?
I have none.
Certainly seems like a perfect background to be on the AgCon.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Jacqueline Shabbat?
Shabot.
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 That was, you did better than I did. I was going to say Chabot. So, so to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024, uh, five, 2025.
I second, I second that.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All right. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. So I would recommend two things. The first is that you're going to need to check in with the Town Clerk to get sworn in. And the second is that the Select Board recently updated its appointment policy. So please check with Elaine to get a copy of that. There's a couple of nice new things added to the end about, you know, things that we're looking for, for appointed officials to do.
Okay.
To work well together. But I'm sure you will thrive.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we have our appointment to the 300th Anniversary Committee. Request from Christopher Sullivan. Is Christopher Sullivan with us this evening?
Right there.
He is. He is.
There he is.
Mr. Sullivan, please state your name and address and your interest in joining the 300th Anniversary Committee.
Good evening, Chris Sullivan, 108 Highland Street, Lunenburg. Here tonight to look to be appointed to the 300th Anniversary Committee for Lunenburg.
All right.
Back, I currently serve on the Park Commission, so I was approached by the Lincolns. I actually own Deb's mom's house. So they, we've had a long history with the Lincolns. They approached looking for someone from Parks to be part of, part of the commission or part of the committee. And in addition to that, background in event planning and things like that as well, so. Been a resident of the town since 2005. Kids involved in schools and sports and so forth, so love the town. Be a great opportunity to help contribute as we get to 300 years.
All right. Excellent. All right. So are there any questions for the applicant this evening?
No, I know he's very active. He's everywhere.
Too active?
Yeah.
Active and fun stuff, though.
Exactly.
Not for the applicant, but general question. Where are, where are we with slots on this now? Just two to fill at this point?
We have, I think, one left.
After this.
And we have an applicant to fill that position for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint Christopher Sullivan of 108 Highland Street to the 300th Anniversary Committee.
Second. All right. The only thing I'll offer is additional discussion, that this doesn't have a term that expires in a couple of years. So this is a, a long-termer.
My coaching, my coaching days are going to dwindle a little bit. The kids are getting a little bit older, so.
Okay.
Little time starts to free up. There's something to fill the time that will free up when I'm not coaching now.
Yeah, no, I get it.
On a lighthearted note, if they, as you plan these events, if you are asked to take notes, use the computer, because I had the damnedest time trying to read your application. I'm like, I was like waiting for my Tom Mix decoder ring, but I eventually got through it, so.
The writing's not the best.
Don't do the handwriting.
Yeah, the writing's not the best.
All right. Is there a motion?
We have a motion.
Oh, I didn't, who was the second?
We can, we can vote again.
No, who was the second? One, two?
Yeah.
All right. I didn't hear. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, that's right. It was additional discussion. A little off tonight. All right. Any, we are good to go. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. So same.
Thank you.
Advice you just heard, make sure you check with the Town Clerk, get sworn in, and then also check with Elaine to get a copy of the appointment policy.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
For volunteering.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So do you want to, I don't believe we have a Town Manager report this evening.
No.
Okay. Do you have any updates you want to quickly provide?
Not at this time.
Okay. Old business. So we have our old business review, annual town meeting warrant articles, capital plan, discuss consent calendar, vote on articles, recommendations, and sign warrant. Would you like for me to start this, Heather, or do you want to start?
I would open up the booklet. That's going to have, we're looking for numbers for certain articles to vote on.
Okay. So let's go through in order. All right. So we're going to go through the booklet to look for our opportunity for recommendations here. We have recommendations for Article 1, Article 2, Article 3.
Article 3, that is the payment of prior year expenses. We have no known prior year expenses at this point. So what the Finance Committee decided was to defer that to town meeting.
Okay. I also recommend that the board defer.
I would second that.
All right. Let's vote on this. All in favor, deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are deferred. None are opposed. Article 4, Select Board recommended approval, excuse me, Select Board needs.
To take a vote.
To take a vote. So this is the, Heather, do you want to speak to this?
Yes.
I'm going to keep calling you on the ones that require numbers.
All right. So that chart is later in the booklet, Article 4. It details the transfers that will be, are part of this article within the operating budget to cover the deficits, including snow and ice. So they'll, it details a transfer of $25,377.77 from the workers' comp line, $14,229.73 from the Technology Department, $75,000 from the Reserve Fund, $33,184.96 from police lockup, $4,000 from the injury leave line, $15,853.80 from radio watch, sorry, yep, $30,922.80 from veterans' benefits. And that, those amounts are to cover these deficits, $38,046 in the recycling program, $63,576.68 for health insurance, and $96,991.92 from snow removal. The remaining amount of the deficit for, projected deficit for snow and ice was covered within the operating budget under DPW. They did interdepartmental line transfers within that department to cover, mostly from pavement management.
So we are not carrying any snow removal deficit outside of the budget itself? It all got covered within the budget?
This covers, yeah, yes.
That's what I'm saying. We're not carrying it, we're, we're, we're re-proportioning things.
Correct.
But that's excellent. Good.
Veterans' benefits. Why are we 30% below our expenses on that?
That's based on the number of beneficiaries we have this year.
That's related to taxes?
That's related to qualifies and applies for benefits.
Got it. I follow. Okay. So that's one of those numbers where it's good to plan for more and, you know, we don't want to be turning people away.
Right.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone else have any questions on the adjustments?
Do not.
Okay. The overall impact is that we are, stay balanced. Okay. Let me go back to where we are in our number.
I would recommend, for Article 4, I recommend the board vote for approval.
Second. Okay. Any other, as many as are in favor, let's just vote for this quickly. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. We recommend approval four to zero. Article Five. See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money into the overlay account. This is the 1.5 million?
Yes. From free cash.
Okay.
But it doesn't indicate the dollar amount here.
Um, it's in the index with all the amounts for the articles.
Just a point of interest, how come it didn't make it into the article?
That's how we typically structure our articles.
A sum of money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
I move the board recommend approval of Article Five.
Second.
Do you have any indication that, I know you're planning worst-case scenario here.
Yes.
But worst-case scenario would be assuming that everyone's getting an abatement back to fiscal '22 numbers, which I think is improbable. So why are we at 1.5 million?
Because we don't know what that final number will be, so we're planning on worst-case scenario.
All right. We have recommendation for, Tommy, did you just make this recommendation?
I did. I moved that the board recommend approval.
Yep. And we have second with Tom, with Lou. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Recommend approval four to zero. Article Six, and this is related to the capital plan. We can go to our booklet to see those numbers where we.
They're not in there. I'm waiting for the final letter from, for the capital planning letter, although I believe it may be final.
Yeah. It's final.
Okay. But you can, there is another document.
You presented one last week, right?
Yes. Revised capital plan. So fiscal '24, Town Manager Revised Capital Plan. So the revised capital plan includes six additional projects, which includes, in order of the Town Manager's prioritization schedule, the Turkey Hill Elementary School upgrade to the fire alarm system for $287,000, the public safety radio system to Phase One to update and replace obsolete hardware, which is $242,510, Northfield culvert at Kelly's Pond, which includes a survey, design, and permitting for $25,000, a new half-ton four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup for DPW for $55,000, the TC Passio sidewalk repair that's identified in the Vertex Report for $25,000, and the Whalen Lake and Marshall Pond treatment for the parks under facilities for $30,000. So the chart, as indicated, shows all the revenue sources to fund all the capital projects that are being funded, that were requested and funded this year, or next year. And that total of being funded, including the two dump trucks and the ambulance that was funded through ARPA funding, that total is $2,025,000, $10. And the total to be voted at town meeting is $1,039,000, $10.
Okay. Are there any questions for the Town Manager? Is there a motion to, is there a motion?
I move that the board recommend approval for the capital planning article.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. Is, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval four to zero. Article Seven, this is for the omnibus budget. Article Seven, omnibus budget, the amount of $42,584,048.95. Is there a motion?
I move to that the Select Board recommend approval of Article Seven, the omnibus budget, as presented.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. And the, the motion passes. Four to zero. Select Board recommends approval. Article Eight, we need to skip.
I vote to defer.
Thank you. There's a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor, please say aye.
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 For those following at home, that's the firefighters' union contract, which we don't know if it'll be ready in time.
All right. So the Select Board has voted to defer four to zero. Article Nine, Amendment to Code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, Schedule A, Salary Administration Plan, this is year '24, which we just did. And that was a motion to approve. Let me get back to the numbers here. Article Ten, Article Ten is the stabilization fund, and this is the regular stabilization fund in the amount of $100,000 transfer from free cash. Is there a recommendation?
Move that we recommend approval of Article Ten.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The Select Board recommends approval four to zero. Article Eleven, Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. This is for $250,000 transfer from free cash. Is there a motion?
Move that we recommend approval of Article Eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Yep. Those opposed, no. The motion passes. So we recommend approval, Article Eleven, four to zero. Article Twelve, OPEB. Okay. So Article Twelve for the OPEB. Heather, would you mind just explaining the, the two numbers that we see here?
The $282,855 is according to our town policy to deposit 10% of the prior year's certified free cash into other post-employment benefit trust fund. And the 1,000 is to transfer from sewer retained earnings for the sewer enterprise portion of OPEB costs.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions about this? This certainly seems to align with our policy. Is there, is there a motion?
I move that we approve, recommend approval of, I didn't, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead. I'm.
Article Twelve.
Article Twelve. Sorry.
Twelve, sorry.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends.
Is there a number for this somewhere in the booklet? Because I didn't see.
It's at the top of the booklet.
In the top.
Yep.
We got to keep going back up.
Oh, it's always at the beginning.
All the way up.
Beginning, beginning. Okay. There we go.
Select Board recommends approval four to zero for Article Twelve. Article Thirteen.
We did that.
We've already voted on. Select Board recommends approval. All right. I got a couple that I don't have any, so until I get to nineteen. All right. So fourteen. This is the sewer enterprise budget. Anticipated receipts, retained earnings, transfer from available funds, the amount of $1,339,850.95. Heather, would you mind just explaining this one just a little bit more for me?
Yes. So this is the portion of the budget, not including the indirect cost and their debt, which are covered under transfers under the omnibus budget. Those amounts are transferred under that article. So this amount is to cover, cover their operating expenses and all those number, let me send you to a chart at the very bottom. It's a summary of all the fund balances and the revenues and the expenditures and the total. So user charges, connection fees, sewer bank fees, penalties and interest, drain layer fees, grease trap, annual permit fees, investment income, reserve capacity, Highfield Village, River, reserve capacity amount, which is zero, fines and fees, zero, transfer from inflow, infiltration stabilization, and transfer some sewer cap, capital reserve fund, and transfer from reserve capacity stabilization fund. That's all their available revenues for the budget. It's $1,220,712.40. Expenditures, payroll is $90,965.80. Purchase of service is $290,200. Utilities is $46,700. And miscellaneous is all other expenditures for 900, sorry, $911,985.87, with that subtotal of $1,339,850.95.
Is this, this documentation makes it look as if they're running at a deficit. Is that correct?
They are covering some of their expenses with retained earnings, that $419,000. And this, there was a late change in their budget, so the Sewer Commission is still going to need to vote on this final number. They received notice from Fitchburg last week that the usage fees were increasing for next year, but this reflects that change. So it's a total change of about $8,000 from their previously voted budget.
Okay. So, but what we're looking at today is a reflection of those changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I hear you correctly saying that they haven't voted on this budget yet?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Then, all right. Are you ready for your deferral?
That's right. I recommend we defer to town meeting.
Second.
Or at least till next week.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to defer, and let me just get back to the article number we were looking at.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. There's a motion to defer on Article Fourteen. Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends deferral, Article Fourteen, four to zero. Article Fifteen, Sewer Capital Reserve Stabilization Fund, the amount of $36,621.37. Have they also not voted on this one either?
No, they have. But this one.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that the board recommend approval of Article Fifteen.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval, Article Fifteen, four to zero. Article Sixteen, Solid Waste Disposal Program Enterprise Budget, the amount of $302,000. Do you want to speak to this one a little bit, Heather, on?
This is essentially the pay-as-you-throw program. The revenues we take in for bag fees to cover the disposal costs.
And just for those, I am correct in, in stating that it has nothing to do with recycling? Like this, this isn't recycling?
There is.
Or is it the recycling?
There's a little bit of recycling in there. But, yeah, most of the recycling costs are in the operating budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Manager on this? All right. All in favor?
I move that we recommend approval of Article Sixteen.
Second.
All right. Any other question, discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval four to zero. Article Seventeen, Select Board, Article Seventeen, the Water Enterprise Budget. The Select Board runs or manages a water department that is fully separate from the water district and serves very few customers. This is for $25,000. Is there a motion?
Recommend, I move that the board recommend approval of Article, what number?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval, Article Seventeen, four to zero. I think we've previously voted on eighteen or nineteen. Let me just get back to it.
No.
Not eighteen.
Okay. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Okay. Let's go back to eighteen. All right. Eighteen is for PEG. I know I got to keep scrolling back and forth here. Eighteen is for PEG, PEG Access Budget, in the amount of $163,261. And this is the anticipated receipts and retained earnings. Anyone need any more information on this one? All right. Is there a motion?
I move that recommend approval for Article Eighteen to support the PAC budget.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Nope. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval, Article Eighteen, four to zero. Article Nineteen has been taken care of. Article Twenty has been taken care of. Article Twenty-One, Home Rule Petition for Senior Tax Relief. Let me just get to it. Just so I can see where we're at.
So two things. I've highlighted the preamble, and in the Google Drive is a memo or email from Town Council outlining two possible options for language. The first option would be where it is such to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation substantially as provided below, provided that the General Court may make clerical and editorial changes of form to the petition only. Option Two would be to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town petition, to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation substantially as provided below, provided that the General Court, with advance approval from the Select Board, which is hereby authorized, may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Yep. That's going to be a no to that latter one.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought we talked about that.
Go to the second one.
Option Two?
Option Two.
Option Two is the one that Lou and I, we had. Recommended that we would do.
Yes.
Because this allows any changes that they make to be approved by us. So the way it's written in the, in the warrant right now is that we petition it, and the General Court can make any changes they want, form or substance, without approval, without coming back to the town. And we didn't want that. So the first, Option One, makes it clear they can only make clerical, so either we can tell them, listen, you can only make clerical or editorial changes, or the Option Two, which is they can recommend, back to the Select Board and get our approval for substantive changes.
Okay.
So it's more flexible. Option Two would be the most flexible. I don't, I mean, nobody knows how these things go, so I'll say that as a preamble. But I don't expect that we're going to get back much from them. I think they're just going to approve or not approve it. I don't think they're going to. I mean, what we're doing is kind of mimicking what other towns have already done, and not in entirely one town or another, but kind of a conglomerate of other towns on what they've already approved. So there's nothing novel here, that we don't think is going to come back anyway.
I think I heard that differently than it was, than it was, than it's written, which is on the, okay.
I have a motion, if I may. I move that we, that the Select Board approve Article Twenty-One as amended by supplanting how the preamble currently reads with Option Two as presented by Town Council. But other than that, retain the original language.
Right. But I should note, and I want to second that.
Okay.
But I also want to note that the part, Section Six, which we had talked about last time, that, that it would expire in X amount of years. We did say we would ask Town Council to, to substitute that. That's already in the, in the booklet. And now Section Six reads that this act may be revoked by an affirmative vote of a majority of town meeting voters at any annual or special town meeting. Any such revocation shall take effect 30 days after an affirmative, affirmative vote of town meeting. So we get to revoke it at any time by town meeting vote, as we had all discussed. But that's in there already.
Yep.
Okay. Very straightforward. Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select Board recommends approval of Article Twenty-One, four to zero.
That's great.
The board also just, I wanna note, and I think the board should probably vote to remove the articles that weren't included in the booklet, that were on the draft warrant before, including the clerical.
We still have Article twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry. You already voted on them.
Yeah, we voted.
Yeah, there's no more. There's no more. We're done.
All right.
So, the clerical union article, the article for OPEB for sewer was combined, we combined those two articles for the town and the sewer into one article for efficiencies. So, removing that one that was on the draft warrant. The article for the TIF, remove that.
Loofah?
Yes. The article for the critical security upgrades to the public safety building as well.
Okay. I'll make the list. Okay. I move for the select board to remove previously selected, submitted articles for clerical union, for OPEB sewer, for TIF, for loofah farms, and for critical security upgrades to the public safety building.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. If all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Select Board has removed. All right. Consent calendar. Are you ready to talk about that today or can you press it off?
No.
All right. Excellent. And when do we need to sign the warrant booklet?
This week. So, I'll, once I have prepared draft for you to sign, I'll have Elaine contact.
Summon us.
Elaine will.
Aruj. Yep. All right. Is everyone available this week to come and sign the warrant?
I am.
Okay. We will be available. Perfect. All right. Let's quickly do our minutes warrants action items before we go into our workshop. Okay. I'm used to my sticker here. We have a warrant, accounts payable warrant in the amount of three-thousand-five-hundred-and-two dollars. Okay. Anything else?
This, I'll introduce this. Asking the board if they can sign a, well, two things. There's Elaine drafted a letter for Mr. Dwyer, just thanking him for his service. So, there's that, signed by the chairman. And secondly, next week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So, this is just a certificate of appreciation for our dispatch, all our staff at the Show But Valley Regional Dispatch.
Okay. And we do have some lunatic residents that work there. Great. Anything else?
That's the.
Oh, yeah. We can't sign.
I don't wanna screw this up. I mean, we blue pen, can I?
All right. Do we have any minutes? Check.
I don't believe there are any minutes.
All right. Any action items this evening? Heather?
No.
I have not.
Oh. Okay. All right. Oh, sign election warrants.
Oh, my lord.
That's what Tom was telling me, too. All right. We need to sign the actual election warrants. Let's go through these.
They're like same.
Yep. We just gotta sign five of them. All right. All right. Any committee reports?
Just say that the FinCom had their public hearing of the warrant on Thursday, to which Mr. Franklin and I attended to present this senior tax relief. And then I listened to the rest of it, mostly. I didn't, I don't know if I made it to the end of it, but about the ten o'clock mark, I made it to. But anyway, the results of theirs are noted here. And the ones they deferred to, like the senior tax relief, they wanted to see the final language. And they will vote on that on their, I believe their.
It said the sixth.
Six, yeah. Which is this Thursday. And the member of the capital planning committee who wrote the report that the town manager referenced earlier, I believe that is now, you know, that is submitted. So, that will make it into the town.
Booklet.
Town booklet, yes.
All right. Any other committee reports? All right. Okay. The select board will enter into a two-minute recess. We'll say three-minute recess. We will reconvene on the floor for an assessment investigation workshop. We're in recess.
Mr. Lartart, I just wanna kinda walk through real quick the format of tonight's discussion. So, we're gonna start tonight briefly by turning over to you to provide any updates you can to us and to the public. Specifically, any kind of updates related to the meeting schedule that you have coming up. If you can address whether or not residents will be able to attend any of those upcoming meetings to discuss their abatement requests. And then after, and then any additional information that you can provide to the public. Following that, what we're going to do is I will lead the conversation as we walk through the investigative framework. We're to go through the questions that the, that the select board seeks to answer. We're to walk through preliminary information we've received. We will touch in that conversation upon the information we've received related to the mailing. And then in, as part of that conversation, we will look for the board of assessors to kinda make, I think based on your agenda, to, if there's an opportunity for a vote, to make a vote. So, we're just gonna start off with any kind of initial information that you can provide also if you wanna introduce yourself and the fellow members of the board of assessors. That'd be helpful.
My name is Richard Lartart, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, two sixty Lancaster Avenue. Chris Cosgrove, who also lives on Lancaster Avenue, and Kevin Fish, who is on Eastern Avenue. We're, this is our three-person board of assessors. To bring you up to date, like Heather said, we've received, we, about two hundred, over two hundred visits have been made. We have not received a formal report. We do not know exactly what's going on. Apparently, I did, I heard tonight that the auditor, the assessor, the assessor who's reviewing the town assessor's work is now gonna have some time off. Can I get, can I get some information on that? I just heard that tonight at the meeting earlier.
It's gonna be the week of April vacation.
So, they're off that week?
Correct.
Okay. So, that puts us, so, what we would like to do is actually send out a letter requesting an extension from all abatement, all people whose abatements have not been yet settled. And at this point, that's all of them. So, the, and we, let me just see my notes there.
Can you clarify what that extension window is? Thirty days, forty-five days?
It's ninety days, Mrs. Jeffries. It's ninety days, which would bring us, no?
No. I spoke with town council about that. I had that same question, if it followed the ninety-day deadline. And it's at the discretion of the property owner. So, they can put in a date when they want the extension until.
Oh. Because the letter that we, that is ready to go, she said ninety days because that was our, that was our impression.
No. Sorry, Rich. The letter, 'cause I received a copy of the letter, has, on the bottom portion of the letter, a date where the property owner can put in the date they want the extension until.
Heather, we changed. After I saw that, I had to put ninety days in. Because I, after checking with Mr. Carroll and with Rena, they both thought it was ninety days. Me, up to ninety days would be fine, but I'm not sure if the homeowner would really know what to put in. They might put in fifteen days, they might put in a hundred and eighty. That was my concern.
I think, I think, Mr. Lartart, that what was said earlier was that the, the team expects that they're gonna be able to complete all of their inspections by the end of April. I think the question is how long it's gonna take the board of assessors to then review all of those. And if there are a handful of inspections that trickle into May, I think what we're looking, what the question really is, is how much time the board of assessors needs. So, many residents, what I would expect, I know this is certainly gonna be you guys' call, but I think that a ninety-day window is going to piss off just about everybody. So, I think you gotta keep that thing down to about thirty, forty, forty-five.
Well, we're, we're gonna do what we can, believe me. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna be in here in the summer. If we can get, if we can get going by the last week of April, we can probably do fifty to a hundred abatements a week. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris and Kevin. So, that, we should be able to get through that by the middle, by the end of May.
Okay. May I just ask a question?
That would be our goal. That would be our goal, actually to get it done as soon as possible. It's just that, we really, we don't know when we're gonna begin to get the information and how long it's gonna take. And your question about public, public access to these meetings, because of the number of them, we'd like to restrict it to probably twenty minutes to a half hour before, before the actual assessors meeting. And go from there.
Mr. Chair, can I, please? So, I guess, do you have any indication yet as to when, or does anybody have an indication yet as to when you will begin, the board of assessors will begin receiving the, the reports from the people that have gone out to the site visits?
That's the, that's the key, Lou. That's the key. When are they gonna start coming in? We had anticipated them to be there today. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We talked about having a meeting on Thursday, anticipating some, some to come in. Our hands are tied until we get the information.
Understandable. Heather, do you have anything to contribute?
Yes. Like, as I indicated in the public comment section of the meeting, the, when I spoke with the owner of MFS today, like you said, they've gone through two-hundred-and-seven inspections. So, thus far, they're expected to do another sixty this Friday and Saturday. He's working on tables for recommendations. And they're also working with Vision to create basically a dummy valuation table for those recommendations. And those inspections, I think the expectation is, would be by, the ones that have been done by April twenty-third. And I wanna make sure to clarify that versus the four-hundred applications. They haven't done four-hundred inspections. So, I wouldn't anticipate that they would have that done by April twenty-third. That's why extension letters are being sent out. So.
I think you're right. They're halfway there now. As far as, as far as physical, physical presence. Now, they've gotta report the file and get it to us. And then we will take it from there.
Right. And I would expect you'd hear about a schedule, but later this week, as far as a definitive, more definitive dates.
Well, are you gonna get the schedule from them? When, when, when's the information gonna start pouring in?
That's going to be sent to the assessors, and I'm gonna be included on that communication.
So, you will let us know then, Heather, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. Franklin?
Yes. I can't believe you saw me there. Madam Town Manager, are they doing, are they processing these, are they doing these site visits in the order in which the abatement applications were submitted? Or are they doing it by neighborhood? How are they attacking this so that, so, you know, to ensure that the earliest ones are roughly getting in front of the board of assessors earliest?
They are aware of all the dates that each application was filed. They were provided in that order of when they were received. So, and they're also approaching it by neighborhood as well when they do their inspections, obviously, for efficiencies. But they are doing it in order of date.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. So, I didn't understand, Mr. Lartart, when you said, in response to people's request to be present at the hearings, you said it was your discussion with the board, I don't even know if it was with the whole board, that there would be, you would meet with people thirty minutes before. I didn't quite understand the format of what you had in mind.
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Alonso. And to me, it's, it's either public comment, giving people a few minutes to express their views. And I would, I would like it to limit it to thirty minutes per, thirty minutes, the forty-five minutes per session. Because we've, it's gonna take us quite a while to go through those abatements.
I think if, and I don't wanna speak for people, but I think that what people wanted was to be at the discussion about their particular property, which of course would be in executive session because it involves personal property. So, only they would be in there with the board and the principal assessor. I think that's what they're looking for, not, not making a public comment, 'cause in public comment, they wouldn't really be able to openly necessarily talk about their own properties because of whatever, you know, it's a private matter. I think they're looking to be inside the meeting during the executive session, during their own particular hearings. So, that as you had an abatement hearing for property X, that those residents would be able to attend. When you went to the next one, they would leave and the next people could go. I think that's what people were envisioning. I don't know if that's what the board of assessors is entertaining or not.
Well, we've entertained it, but I don't know if it's gonna be possible. Mainly because the amount of time, if you set a limit of three minutes, you know that's not gonna last. That's gonna go to five to seven. I just don't know if we're gonna have the time unless, unless our extensions can go further than, further than a month. We do what we can.
I, I do, as far as the extensions, I'm perfectly fine with being them for nine I, I do, as far as the extensions, I'm perfectly fine with being them for 90 days. And I think if they happen sooner, I, what I don't want is a shorter one, so that either you have to ask for an additional extension, or they get tacitly denied because you didn't get to them. Nobody wants that. So I think a longer extension kind of makes sense, at least to me.
Well, I'm with you on that.
So I think, Mr. Lattart, it would be helpful to us to get some clarity from you in terms of what your intention is. So, is, and I think, well, I think what I just heard you say is that, and I, and I could do the math as well, you know, 300 roughly applicants have requested to meet with the board. If everyone takes three minutes, that's 900 minutes, just to hear applicants, which is going to take, you know, and we're, and we're talking about a timeline where there's probably just not enough time. So, what is the, I guess what we're looking for is, this has been kind of kicking around for a little bit, so is it the determination of the Board of Assessors that the plan forward is that residents will not be able to attend the executive sessions, and that the board will entertain those comments in public comment sessions only? Is that correct?
That's, yes. I had, I actually had a thought about this, is that perhaps we could go into executive session, and people could come in individually and leave, make their comments, but, but all at once. In other words, property A, then, then they would leave, property B, they would come and go. It would be in an executive session. I don't know if that's-
Mr. Lattart, if the select board pauses for a minute, would you mind taking the time to canvas your board and discuss this?
Sure. Kevin, what do you think?
The difficulty with this in my mind is this, is, as noted, even at three minutes, you're talking about 900 minutes, which equates out to 15 hours. We're looking at, trying to, we're initially looking at a timeframe of trying to do it in 30 days. Allowing for two meetings a week, which is what our original intention was, we actually had fully intended to start today, doing meetings with governing the abatements. I just don't see how, even limiting it to three minutes, which, as noted, it's unrealistic that they would be confined to that timeframe. I just don't know how we can do, you know, if all 300 do want to come. And I understand the frustration, believe me, I do. But just from a pure practical standpoint of being able to get through 400 abatements, you know, our goal was planning to do 30 to 50 abatements in each, each of these executive sessions. So, I mean, we're talking between 60 and 100 per week. And we know we can do that with straightforward, because we did it with the non-Lake properties recently. I just don't know if we have the, you know, if we have the capacity to set aside enough time in the time allotted to be able to allow for that kind of a give-and-take hearing, as I understand the citizens are looking for. I just don't know, I, if I, if we, you know, had unlimited time, I would love to do it. I'm just not sure we have the capability and the time within the structure that we have to be able to implement that sort of a scenario. That's why we had originally been talking, kicking around the idea of confining the comments to the public comment section before we go into executive session.
And you've got to remember that after the three minutes erupt, then, then the board has got to discuss the assessment application. So you're probably talking a 10 minutes per property, minimum. So it's going to, it's going to really be mushroomed. We'll do what we can. Maybe we should try at the beginning, but then I, I don't feel that it's correct to let somebody, somebody come in and not let the rest of the people come in. We've got to be fair to all.
Mr. Chair?
You need to do your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. My situation is different than Kevin's, and I did tell them both. I just have more time that I could devote. So, but because you've already heard from two of them, and it's, it's three people, so.
So, if I-
Yes, yes.
If I may ask, so what would you do, just for yourself? I don't, I don't understand-
I can't, I put in, in my note to them that I don't think it's appropriate for one person to take action. So that's not going to work. And Kevin works many, I'm retired, so the fact that I have more time and I could offer it is really irrelevant, right? So he works a lot of hours at his job, and I just have more time, so.
And unfortunately, I'm stuck in Florida with that, with a wife who's not the healthiest. And we're waiting for an okay from the ophthalmologist to let her go home. But that's, that's my problem, not yours.
To the town manager.
I would just add that whatever the decision is, that is made by the assessors, that you stick to that same process throughout the process, that it not be changed midway through, that there be consistency, and that everyone knows what to expect going into this.
One, one comment is, correct me if I'm wrong, is that most of these abatements were written, and these people put their grievances in, in their actual abatement application. Is that correct?
I think what he's asking is, I think, Mr. Lattart, what you're saying is that people wrote down the reasons why they're asking for an abatement in their applications, and that you already have that information available. I follow that.
That's correct, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
That's part of the form, yes.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
To echo what the town manager said, I think, first of all, that's absolutely critical, that whatever you decide has to be-
Consistent.
Consistent across. Barring, or noting, I should say, the time requirement, even to hear three minutes. I hear that, and I understand people's constraints, you know, all of us work, well, I think all of us work full-time here, too. The case is an extraordinary case, so probably requires an extraordinary, you know, resolution. I just offer that because obviously, there's a lot of people that this, I don't, I won't go over the impact, we've heard it for months and months. So it is an extraordinary case, and I do understand the time requirements that would be taken. And the decision is obviously up to the Board of Assessors, so I just would leave it at that.
Can I, I'm just going to make one other thing. And I don't, I don't know how it works with, with Kevin, because he's, he's still working. But if we could have a lot of time during the day, that might be, that might be, that might be helpful. And we are going to be probably scoring a new assessment, a new assessor in early May. When's the elect, when's the town election?
Late May.
May 20th.
Oh, that's a little bit later than I thought. So that, that adds a little bit of, a little bit, and I, I hope to be home by May, by May 1st, or before.
So, Mr. Lattart, what I, what I would offer is that it would be very helpful if, within the next couple of days, if the select, if the Board of Assessors can meet again and finalize what this process will be. You know, once you get beyond the abatement process, and you get into the ATB process, which is the appellate tax board, then that shifts from Board of Assessors to select board, because now we're legal. And then it's legal strategy for the town, which is the select board's responsibility. So we need to have a solid, consistent process in order to be able to move forward. So I'm just urging that you come up with a, a written plan for how you're going to review the abatements, whether or not residents will be allowed, and then to stick to it, as Heather suggested. And if you wouldn't mind purposing to have that as a, as a document completed within the next week or so, I think that will work to everyone's benefit, and perhaps sooner, so that way perhaps you can accompany, add into the letters that you're sending out to residents what that process may be. But that needs to be finalized, I would recommend for that to be finalized as soon as possible.
We'll, we'll do that. I'll-
Mr. Franco?
Thank you. Just two quick things. One, let's, let's, let's let the, whatever you, regardless of what your decision is going to be, let's let the residents also, remind the residents that now these abatement applications, whether there's a hearing or not, whether there's an in-person hearing or not, will be supplemented with the reports that the independent assessors provide. So that, that is all going to be taken into account when they, when they review these abatement applications. That's number one. Secondly, logistically, Mr. Lattart, if the Board of Assessors ultimately decides that they are going to allow some kind of limited, I wouldn't call it a, I wouldn't call it a back and forth, I, I, I mean, that's, that's up to you ultimately. I mean, I'm calling, I've been calling it verbal supplementation, where applicants could come in and give three minutes of supplementation, and present any additional evidence or argumentation that they may have. And you just take that into account, take the notes, and then they move on, is kind of how I pictured this thing flowing realistically, but that's just a suggestion. But anyway, it was suggested to me, and I completely forgot about this option, that this could be regulated and facilitated through Zoom executive sessions with people in the waiting rooms, in a waiting room. So people, applicants are in the waiting room, and then they come in, each applicant comes in, their time starts, they present their, privately present their argument, argument, and then they exit, and the next person is let in. So that each person is, I just think that's even probably better than a real room, actually. It's just going to flow better, if that's the route you take. And I forgot my last point, so.
It'll come back to you. So, Rich, if you can commit to getting that over to us, I think that what residents are, are, you know, residents who submitted abatement applications, I think that what they're looking for is, and it sounds like what needs to probably happen on your side, is some coordination with the vendor who's performing these assessments, so that way you can kind of come up with a calendar for when you expect, on which dates to review certain, certain abatement requests. And if you can communicate that out, because I think right now it's a little bit of a vacuum of information, and, and you got to kind of fill that in a bit. And so if you can work, you know, coordinate, and Lou is our kind of, you know, designated select board appointee on this, or liaison for us on this, he's more than willing to be helpful. But I think the product that you want to deliver to the public is kind of what your upcoming meeting schedule is, and tentatively kind of when you plan to consider different requests. Even if that changes, I think most people understand that plans change. But I think it's, it's helpful to have at least something that's a tentative roadmap for how you're going to get from where you're at to where you, you know, the finish line.
Well, I have, I, I happen to agree with that, and I think that what we talked about earlier was that consistency. My feeling was, it's either all or nothing. Everybody's going to have a chance, or nobody's going to have a chance. I would prefer, I kind of like Lou's idea, similar to, to what I had spoken to earlier, where someone comes in, they, they speak, but this, this was, say, executive, executive session, public comment, not public comment, or we'll have to discuss it. There are a number of, a number of different scenarios here.
I think it would be helpful to, Rich, tell them, I think it would be helpful if you would just tell them the system that we had that was to start today. You alluded to it a little bit.
Well, we intended to start today.
And it was to be how many hours?
We were going to try to do, we were, we were going to try to do 40, 40 a meeting.
So that would, that would probably be about four hours on Tuesday, and then four hours on Thursday, and then-
Correct.
It was twice a week, four hours, three to seven, and we were stopped up immediately. I mean, we assumed, so maybe Mr. Franco could take on the problem of contacting this man whose name is Nate to get a firm schedule from him. Is that not possible?
That's what I spoke with the owner today about, getting a firm schedule.
I didn't hear any specificity at all.
And he said-
And we're stopped up totally until we can-
Yeah. And we're only as good, we're only as good as the information we have. And if we don't have any, we can't do much.
Right. And the schedule, he said he expected to, to send something out by the end of this week.
Oh, you said the 23rd or something?
No, that, the vote on abatements that have been done so far, expected to be on the 23rd.
Oh, okay. But, okay.
So, wait, I'm confused. Who's voting on the abatements for the 23rd? I'm very confused by this. Is it that they are-
That they'd be the ones that have been inspected so far, that they would be ready to be voted on by the 23rd.
Okay, so they won't be handed over to the assessors till the 23rd. We're going to clarify this all right now. So the big bunches have been done, the 207.
That's just the inspection piece. There's the whole valuation-
Right, right.
Models that have to go into that.
But all of those have, none of those valuations have been done, and none of that will get over to the assessors until April 20?
That's the expected date. He's going to firm that up by the end of this week.
Okay.
But that's taking into account that they're not working a week of that time.
Okay, so, but that's the, the last, April 28th? Is that what you said?
20, 23rd, which is actually a Sunday, so-
So the week of the 24th?
Right.
Heather, Heather, is it possible to, to get this stuff in piecemeal? And then those supposedly, they've gotten 147 done, and they're, they're working on another 70 or 60. That's 207. If we could get, if we could get 50 every two days, that, that might help us out a whole heck of a lot.
I'll, I'll take this answer. So, speaking, speaking with the vendor myself, I think that, you know, I have to be careful with what I say tonight on this one. I think the vendor has identified that the, that they're going to recommend changes beyond just giving you property values. And so what they're looking to do is provide the Board of Assessors with their recommendations for individual properties, but also structurally, within the actual system, the Vision-Camus system, they're also making additional recommendations and changes for the board to consider. And, and speaking with the vendor, the intent is so that way the board has a fair template across the board. So, you know, and, and again, I don't want to identify something that's, has not been presented, that's not in the record, you know, but I think the question overall is about index one. And I think that what you have is you have a vendor who's performing these visits, and now he's kind of individually saying, okay, I see the need for additional changes here within your system. So what you're going to, what I'm expecting the vendor to provide is not just, here's your individual property valuations, but also making recommendations for, for some structural adjustments, if that makes sense.
That sounds very reasonable.
And so that's, that's the reason why it's a little bit beyond, I think, the initial timeline that everyone was thinking, because there's more, there's a little more to it.
So we, so we need these, we need these extensions?
You definitely need the extensions. And I, and I think the expectation is that when you get those documents on the 23rd, that what you're going to receive is kind of a, is a revaluation of the, of your map, as well as, you know, recommendations based on that revaluation. So you have a vendor that's, that, again, is, I have to be careful with what I say for introducing things that are not in written form or otherwise in the record. But, you know, I think that you're, you're, the expectation is that you're going to get a little bit more than what we, I think, were initially asking for.
Well, that's, that's reasonable.
Mr. Chair? At the, at the, so, I want to clarify one point because of what the town manager said in public comment of the, of the beginning of the meeting regarding the mailing date that adds into this a little bit, and for people to know. So it is my understanding now, with the date being accepted as after December 31st, that the due date is, of course, May 1st, that also allows abatements to be, new abatement applications to be made up till May 1st. So anybody who is-
That is correct.
Okay, so as long as the board is aware of that, so there may actually be additional ones between now and then that come in, given the news of tonight. So if people who-
That is correct.
Okay, so if people who have not filed abatements, who didn't know, didn't have it on time, hadn't paid their bill, for whatever reason, the application time is still open?
It's open, right.
Okay.
I think that, I think, however- I think that, I think, however, oh, sorry. I think that to come up with, we can come up with a plan. It won't have a timeframe on it, from what you're saying, because we did forty abatements, well, I have the number in a certain amount of time, and that's what we've been calculating. Okay.
Okay.
Just so you know.
That makes perfect sense, Christine. All right. I would like for us to, at this point, pivot, if we have, if we, I want to just give everyone around the table any other clarifying questions, but I do want to pivot here to pick up on the investigation. So I just want to kind of go around with us, if there's any additional questions, comments, clarifications, before we move on. Mr. Franco?
Yes, I remembered my third point from before, and I don't want it to go away again. If, if the Board of Assessors ultimately decides in its discretion that it is going to allow these hearings, you, you, these verbal supplementations, don't take into account that you're going to have to notify in advance the, the people, the residents, whose applications you plan on taking up in the next session, et cetera. With regard to, and secondly, this is a minor point, but you said my idea was not my idea, Mr. Lattart, somebody, a resident suggested that waiting room idea to me. I did not come up with that, so I had forgotten. All right, just giving credit. The, the, secondly, could, could not somebody theoretically, if the date, it does become May first, and that's finally determined here, that, that was the due date, because the mailings went out after December thirty-first, theoretically, rather than grant, do the extension through a, through the form letter, could, could somebody theoretically reset the clock by just withdrawing and then resubmitting their abatement, and start a new ninety-day clock, start a new three-month clock? So say somebody submitted a, an abatement application on January fifth. Now, we're saying that the deadline for filing the abatement was actually May first, not February first. So they could theoretically, I'm, I don't know the answer to this, actually. I'm just throwing this out there. Could they?
I asked, I asked Town Council that question, too, and he said, no. You know, the abatement application that they filed originally would be the one that would be acted on.
So no, no, no force down to you, no new set of them.
And no restarting the clock.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to walk through tonight, I want to briefly kind of walk through the questions, as you guys, the Board of Assessors is aware, this is like, we're initiating the investigation. I kind of just want to walk through you, with you, through that framework, kind of talk through some of the things that have come out in this process. All right. So
We can't hear you.
Thank you. My mic was not on. So, so I want to start with the, the general framework for the investigation that the Select Board is doing. Kind of, I just want to walk through it. Yeah, I just want to walk through this, and the town manager will be sharing this on the screen. We're going to go through this pretty quick, we're not going to read every page. So first, you know, we start with the authorization and purpose. This is, you know, what came out from the Select Board on January seventeenth, the meeting of the, of the Select Board in the middle high school auditorium, the Select Board, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just noting, you know, that the Select Board authorized an investigation. Again, I'm going to get through this pretty quickly. I want to get to page four, facts and rules of evidence. So what we're, what we're scrolling through is just, you know, support personnel, confidentiality, that, you know, that we're going to keep everything confidential, facts and rules of evidence. So we're going to facts and rules of evidence. So facts and rules of evidence, investigators will compile a list of facts and reference each to supporting evidence. Facts are not subject to reasonable Someone needs to be muted.
That's Rich.
Okay, all right. Don't mute yourself yet, Rich. All right. Facts are not subject to reasonable dispute because they are commonly known, or can be accurately and readily determined from sources whose accuracy cannot reasonably be questioned. These definitions as note come from mass general law, and also from federal law for the establishment of facts. Evidence catalogued into exhibits must be directly related to support the existence of a fact. Evidence is relevant if it, A, has, if, A, it has any tendency to make a fact more or less probable than it would be without the evidence, and B, the fact is of consequence in determining an action. So this is just establishing facts. So we also scrolling through, I just want to scroll through, so we also have some interview principles that we established pretty early on of the process that we would undertake, that interviews would have a clear goal or objective, predetermined, written questions, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we do have kind of outlined for ourselves a bunch of rules that we, that we would follow. The, the key thing is that investigators would make copious notes in shorthand throughout the interview, immediately following interviews prior to initiating any other major task. The investigator shall prepare a written report that details, you know, you're a little further down, if you want to scroll, that details the date and location, the interview name or interviewee, questions asked, et cetera. So this is just identifying, we're getting through this a little quickly because we have a lot of stuff to go through. This is just identifying that we, we did come up with some rules for ourselves. Next is going to the phases of the investigation. So we kind of put the investigation into multiple phases, the pre-investigation preparation, and I want to walk through this one a little more slowly. This is when we said, look, we need to create a framework that establishes the guidelines for how we're going to move forward. That was one of the first tasks that we accomplished, also identifying the core questions that the investigation seeks to answer, identifying the internal, initial internal, external resources that would be required. Some of this has changed, creating scopes of work, and requesting bids from vendors, publishing RFPs to procure, and then also collecting key data on fiscal year twenty-three valuations and tax assessments. So the first part of the process is to gather evidence. It's establishing a timeline of events, answering those core questions through the establishment of facts, and supporting evidence or exhibits, evaluating the data for its complete, for its completeness as it's received, and then when interviews seem necessary, that we will conference and prepare interview questions, conduct interviews, create interview reports, external resources will conduct review and analysis, and then maintaining an investigative report that details the process, and that captures all the facts of the evidence. And then as we get into phase two, analyzing that evidence and data, which is pretty straightforward, and then phase three is, is identifying corrective actions, you know, what things could have happened along the timeline that would have been interruption, basically, and then the fourth phase of this is finalizing. So what we're doing is, is we are still partially in the phase one phase, I'm not, we're not out of it, there's always overlap. So with phases, there never is, you know, clear cut ends. So there's, you know, we're in the phase one, phase two portion. When we first started this, going into projected timelines, when we first started this, we kind of outlined three different scenarios of timelines, of how long will it take us to get through this process? You know, the pre-investigation prep work, and we, and there are multiple variables. So we're going to kind of walk through what they were, we know kind of where they were at now. The pre-investigative preparation took more time than I think we all expected. That was a little bit more. The gathering of evidence, certainly, we're in that phase that's taken more time. So the first timeline would have an end date of around May the twenty-third. The second timeline would have an end date of around May the twenty-second, and then with these, we also have some known caveats or known things to be aware of, that a decreased data set that compares actual assessed value against taxed assessed value will limit the fidelity of the analysis otherwise available by a slightly lengthier timeline, that additional analysis would need to be conducted to evaluate the full data set when it becomes available. Workload to investigators due to proximity to town meeting will be significant, and that's in the second scenario, and that quarter four payments are due, you know, prior to the conclusion of the investigation. Timeline may be notably affected by unseen external factors and/or unrealized assumptions. So we made a lot of assumptions at the beginning, knowing that there would be a lot of variabilities, and the third timeline, which was kind of our best case, everything works perfectly, that we would be complete with the investigation at some point mid-April, which we know has not occurred, or will not occur. So let's go into our core questions. What are we seeking to answer? And I, and then we're going to go through this slowly, because we're also going to reference the data that we have. So the first question, if you can keep scrolling, first question under core questions, was the principal assessor competent for March the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two? Oh, we lost, we're here, so give me a sec. What may be best, Heather, actually, is to scroll to the very end, where we have the questions kind of expanded, on page twelve. And, yeah, no, we're not sharing yet. We're not sharing yet.
Did it say twelve?
Yes. Page twelve. No, no, he's standing. It says he doesn't blink.
But he's, he's moving.
Let me see him. All right. So within this, there's a series of other underlying questions within them. So let's start in with number one. Was the principal assessor competent, and we're going to go to, yeah, the very end, was the principal assessor competent for March the first, two thousand twenty-two, to December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three? I think the overall answer to that question is yes, and that is based on the standards as identified by Mass DOR, in which they identify the competence of, of an individual. So, you know, did, what was a principal assessor's education and experience? What came out in the investigation was the investigator has a bachelor's degree, excuse me? The principal assessor, yep. The principal assessor has a bachelor's degree in, in finance, that they performed data collection activities in the town of Lunenburg for over two years, that their primary coursework was completed, and the MAAO designation, which is, you know, not, which is required for the job within two years, that he was substantially complete in that, but that is not a requirement to be an assessor. Did the principal assessor have a mentor? The answer there was yes, and if so, what support did that mentor provide? That was kind of a career mentor, who the principal assessor has had for about seven or eight years. Was the principal assessor certified to perform his duties? That answer from Mass DOR was a yes. Did the principal assessor receive specialized training or have familiarity with software systems employed? The answer there was also a yes, specific training related to the Vision Camma system that the town employs. And then was the principal assessor compliant with competent standards as determined by the Mass DOR Commissioner for Assessors? And the answers there were also yes. On the second question, the primary question, was what was the decision-making process that the principal assessor undertook to achieve fiscal year twenty-three property values and assessments? And there were several questions in here. Are some private parcels exempt from taxation, and if so, why? Is there a statistical difference in property values between homes nearest Lake Shirley, Lake Wellm, or Hickory Hills? How was the index map determined? How often is it updated? What is the ordinary process to update it? How is a property value determined for the three hundred and twenty-seven acres known as Hickory Hills? What software was employed to assist with property valuations or assessments? And then underneath that, does the software provide standard alerts or notifications about impact from fiscal year to fiscal year? Does the software analyze sales data and provide recommendations? Does Mass DOR have a position or requirement regarding the assessment software that was used? What valuation did the properties that sold in, in two thousand twenty-one get for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three? Did the principal assessor analyze fiscal year twenty-two property values and assessments alongside fiscal year twenty-three values and assessments, and consider variances or differentials? Do guidelines or recommendations or regulations recommend such analysis? So question number two is substantially not completely answered. We do have some answers to some of these questions that came out in the process. I think this is the bottom line of what everyone wants to know. Now, as I pause here for a second, one of the things that we had decided early on was that we would attempt to bring in some outside support, who can meet with town council. I've been provided with about seven different, seven, eight different recommendations. I've reached out to all of them, six have declined, and one is, is, is willing to talk with me again. We've had a couple of conversations. They're still talking, but they have not accepted. So it has become more challenging for us, knowing that our priority was to use anyone we could find to help do the actual property inspections, that the secondary need was also to kind of have someone meet with CJ. That we have had some challenges. But as we noted earlier, I think one thing that I have to be careful of tonight is to not speak to anything I've learned from Nate Kramer and his team, but it seems pretty clear that they're going to be able to provide us with a lot more details and analysis than I think what we were initially looking for, that they, that they are going to be making recommendations beyond just property values, but recommendations to the Vision Camma system itself, and that, and they will be able to be more helpful. So I just want to pause and comment on that, but we're going to keep, keep walking through. Number three, were all cells that were considered to achieve fiscal year twenty-three property valuations compliant with Mass DOR standards? A, does exclusive lake, lake access, or the perception of it, contribute to home values around the lakes? Has advertising for homes on Hickory Hills promoted private access to the lake? The answer there is yes. Has advertising for homes on Lake Shirley promoted limited public access? The answer there is no. Was the, what was the process the principal assessor undertook consistent with professional standards and norms? Number five, was the process the principal assessor undertook to achieve fiscal year twenty-three property values and assessments compliant with Mass DOR standards? The answer to number five by Mass DOR is yes. Number six, was there a historical error or decision that contributed to increases in the index for fiscal year twenty-three values, valuations, or assessments? And then A, for the last ten years, what was the ASR, assessment of sales ratio for all indexes prior to and after actual assessments were provided? We do not have answers to this yet. Now, if I can pause here on number six, one of the things, Mr. Lattart, that came out, and Chris and Kevin, one of the things that came out in our interviews was speaking with Rena, speaking with you, Mr. Lattart, speaking with, you with Lou, speaking with Ms. Paquette, who was our previous support personnel in the office, speaking with Sheila, speaking with Sue Burns, who was a previous assessor, speaking with Chris Kumar, who was a previous assessor, everyone commented that they had concerns about the quality of the data. And every member of the, and prior member of the Board of Assessors I spoke to also commented on the effort to move away from RRG. So I just want to publicly state that summary that was given. It seemed as if the Board of Assessors had several questions about whether or not RRG was, was actually performing the cyclical inspections that they were supposed to be performing. There were questions of whether or not RRG was, was, they, they clearly weren't able to complete all areas of assessment, meaning commercial property, residential property, and personal property. And so it looks as though the Board of Assessors made an effort to kind of take some of those responsibilities away from RRG, and bring an additional support to be able to get them done. The Board also expressed, you know, previous members as well as support staff also identified during the interviews, that when they would ask RRG questions, that RRG would often say, I'll get back to you, I'll get back to you, follow-up meetings, they wouldn't get back to you. And so what, what occurred then was the Board was growing increasingly frustrated, and the, the other part of that was as well, office hours, that the contract was that the vendor would perform so many hours per week, it was not occurring. And so there were concerns about the quality of information, about whether or not the cyclical inspections were being performed, about whether or not the vendor was actually doing the work that was supposed to happen. And so then the Board moved to move away from RRG into having an in-house principal assessor, so that way you could improve the quality of data. It seems as if the Board of Assessors was universally aware that there was a problem, and so they made the effort to move in the right direction. The first person that was hired was in the job for approximately thirteen months, that what happened with that person was, and I'll share publicly, it's in the, it's in the interview, what they said was, look, I got to a point and I realized that I'm, you know, older, older woman, and her kids had moved down to North Carolina, and she wanted to move and her kids had moved down to North Carolina, and she wanted to move down there with them. She loved working in Lunenburg, she didn't want to relieve, she had offered to do it remotely, uh, that the Board was not interested in that, neither was the town manager. And so she said, okay, you know, I'm gonna move down here. The next person that the town hired after, uh, and I believe this was Sue Burns, after Sue Burns left, uh, was Chris Kumar. Chris Kumar came on board, she was only with the town for approximately three months. Um, she had a personal issue, uh, in which that resulted in her leaving the town pretty shortly. She enjoyed working with the town, um, but again, she had a personal thing that came up that required her to leave. Then the Board, so when Sue Burns was in, and why the R R G data is so relevant, that when Sue Burns was, was on staff, she completed it in that thirteen months, two years of property valuations. And so when Chris Kumar came on board, she didn't complete any years of evaluations, her employment with the town was in the, in the very beginning of the year. There was then a break. Uh, Rena came on board, Rena, who is currently working with, uh, the Board of Assessors, she was a previous assessor in the city of Groton, in the town of Groton, as well as another location, she'd also served as a member of the Board of Assessors as well. Uh, she was an interim that was in place for about four months prior to C J being hired. So, it seems as though the Board had made the decision to move in a different direction and then found itself kind of stumbling um, with being able to have a, a staff member who could be retained. Now, one thing that also came out in the investigation is that assessors generally are getting a little older, that there's not a lot of people younger coming into the field. And so you have an aging population of assessors, um, and you don't have a lot of people entering the field, uh, which makes it really challenging, and, and it seems to be a small world. Almost everyone has worked for D O R, worked for R R G itself as a company, handles ten percent of the, of the states, uh, as far as, they have thirty-five, thirty-six municipalities under contract, which is ten percent of the Commonwealth. So it seems as though it's a small world, everybody knows each other, for sure. Um, and so, that kind of, again, the, so when we talk about the historical issue, and whether or not there was a historical issue, I think it seems pretty clear that the Board identified in the interview process concerns about the data. So I wanna stop there and just give you, Rich, um, and even Mr. Franco, the opportunity to add any more color to that analysis of that statement.
I think you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Chairman. We had, we had issues with, with R R G, and, uh, we decided not to renew his contract. And then you picked up the story from there.
Mr. Franco, do you want to add any additional? Mr. Franco, do you want to add additional content?
Everything that guy just said. Exactly on.
Okay. All right. So, next, number seven. Winver fiscal year twenty-three quarter three and quarter four payments mailed. So what we have on this one, uh, Mr. Lartart, and to the Board, I know this is on your agenda, what we have is conflicting information. That's what we have. If you asked me to say one hundred percent, again, can I establish as fact that the payments were mailed on the thirtieth? The answer is no. Can I establish as fact that they were mailed on the sixth? For me, the answer is no. Uh, do I believe that there's a high probability that these were mailed after the thirtieth? The answer there is yes. So what we have identified, and I, I'm not sure if you watched our previous meeting, but I just wanna summarize. Uh, it looks as though, I think, all members have. Rich, have you watched, did you watch our previous meeting where we discussed this?
I watched part of it, but I don't know if I, if I watched that particular part.
All right.
Yeah, that was at the end of the meeting, I don't think I did.
I wanna pause, I'm gonna give my voice a break for a second, turn over to Mr. Alonso. Mr. Alonso, would you mind summarizing, uh, the situation with the, uh?
Well, the summary is that, uh, you know, we, we received evidence from the post office from their uh, business mailing entry units, where these were mailed in North Reading, that the date that they were, they, they were received by their system was January sixth. They have a very stringent system about when things are checked in and how things are operating at that branch. All they do is receive mail and then take it as provided by the bulk mailers and send it to the post offices where they will be processed, for Lunenburg, that is Shrewsbury. And so everything in their systems indicated it was January sixth. Whereas what the affidavit showed was a form wizard from the, our bulk mailer that really has no, you know, aside from their signed affidavit, there's no real evidence that they presented that, that according to the post office, what they provided us was when they intended to mail it, according to when they filled out the form. So with, as, with evidence as such, it was decided by the Board on that meeting last week, and then determined by the tax collector, as per our town council, uh, after his, uh, conference with, uh, D O R and their legal staff, that tax collector, uh, accepted that the, for all intents and purposes, they will have been mailed on January sixth. And that's where we are now. My, my meeting last week was much better and was much longer, so if you don't want the Reader's Digest version, but you want the whole Dickensian version, then I, I, I really would forward you to that.
I, I saw the Dickensian version, actually.
All right, so I'm gonna share with you the actual affidavit that we received, and I wanna walk through the problems that we initially identified with it. I have to get a little closer. So I'm gonna walk through the affidavit that we received, and I wanna identify some of the concerns that we identified with it. So the first issue is when you, when we actually saw this in real life, the signature did not appear to be an actual ink signature. It appeared to be a stamp. Um, also, when you have Susan Olson, who is the person who notarized this, there's no additional statement related to what they're notarizing. So normally you have a statement that says, this person personally appeared to perform, et cetera, et cetera. What you also have is a date that says December the twenty-ninth. And if we scroll to the next page of when they said that they're gonna mail it, it says that they're gonna mail it on the thirtieth. So the initial, the initial concern, uh, and again, this, the select board initiated the investigation on the seventeenth of January. So when we reviewed this, when I reviewed this, when I saw this for the first time, it was already in February. Those things stood out as being problematic. And so what we have on this other page is, it's very hard to read, because this really is like font four. Um, it's, it's about as small as it gets. Um, but what you have up here is, is what the mailings were, you also have a time of when the mailings were paid, but everything is dated the thirtieth. So that's what then triggered the conversation with the company of saying, how did you sign an affidavit on the twenty-ninth, incorrectly, by the way, for something that you did on the thirtieth? And that's what initiated the response. Now, we did get some, some verbal information from them, uh, they did acknowledge that they had so much that they were kind of just form-signing all this stuff. Um, but again, we had multiple conversations with them. We also have a postal receipt, uh, that Mr. Alonso was able to identify, and that postal receipt, as well as the postal process that Mr. Alonso identified, says, look, we didn't bring this into our custody until January the sixth. Now, I was told that the mail sat there for a couple of days. Um, and, and whether or not that happened, I honestly don't know. So what I would make an argument for is that this is one of those things that ought to be black and white. There ought to be no confusion over when someone mailed something. And since there is confusion, I will ask the Board of Assessors to determine that the mailing occurred on January the sixth. With that determination, uh, and only the Board can make this decision, again, the separate piece of this, as Town Manager identified, is from the tax collector. Tax collector has already made this determination of the mailing, she cannot determine that the mailing occurred on the thirtieth, and so she will, uh, believe that the mailing occurred on the sixth. Um, and so that then has the tax implications. When it comes to the Board of Assessors, the Board of Assess, and what that means is, we can't charge interest on anything that people didn't pay, and that the payments aren't due until May the first. So that decision has already been made. What we're looking for the Board of Assessors to make a determination on is if you will also accept the January the sixth mailing. With that, the effect of you deciding that is that it allows residents who have not yet submitted an abatement to have the opportunity to submit an abatement. So I will pause for your questions or comments, and for you guys to be able to take this up as a matter to vote upon.
I have a question. I have a question. I didn't, I didn't, all I heard was quite a bit of clarity around January sixth. I didn't hear what muddied the water? What's the confusion? This affidavit that has multiple signings and this person possibly has a vested interest in signing, uh, uh, December twenty-ninth?
So I, I can offer that clarification. So, you know, the mailings have to occur by the end of December in order for the town to be able to collect taxes on February the first. Okay, you're following that?
No, I, and I understand the future. You guys have made your decision, you need us to do it so that we can progress. I'm still missing, it seems quite clear that it was January sixth. Is it this affidavit that makes it not January sixth? And that thing is conflicted? It was signed on, on the twenty-ninth, and yet you know something happened on the thirtieth? It, is that the piece that makes, muddies the water?
It is. It, the affidavit is what muddies the water. The affidavit should be crystal clear, there should be no confusion on that, and I think that we also have an affidavit that says that something occurred on a certain date, and then we have a post office receipt that says, oh, no, it happened seven days later. And so I think what we're looking for is for the Board of Assessors to also be able to identify, as this Board has, that the mailing occurred on the sixth.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, so first of all, to Ms. Cosgrove's comment, I couldn't agree more. I said that to the Board. When this message, when this affidavit was given to us, it was questionable before we got the postal receipt, and clearly, to me, the postal receipt is absolutely crystal clear, I agree with you. Secondly, although I would entertain the motion by the Board of Assessors, I understand from Town Council's mail that since the tax collector has accepted the mailing to come on January sixth, that the application deadline for the abatements is by statute, May first. So it does not require the Board of Assessors' vote, although I would not object to a, a, a Board of Assessors' vote, just to make it nicely bowed and signed.
Yeah, and I think we just got that Town Council thing at five fifteen tonight, but I did read it and got, it, it understood what you just said. But that's one reading, I mean, you're reading legalese, sorry.
I'm asking.
You kind of have to read and read and read.
We're asking for that pretty bow, is what we're asking for. We're asking for a pretty bow.
I'm gonna put in something probably is, should not be stated. Um, anecdotally, a lot of us have received, um, citizens from Lunenburg saying we didn't get our tax bills on time, and it was late enough, people were getting ready to call, uh, to find out, and then they came. Um, but however, that really shouldn't be said, it's irrelevant because it's anecdotal.
Mr. Fish?
I guess my comment is just a very brief one, is, you know, does it rise to the standard of beyond a reasonable doubt like we would need for a criminal proceeding? Maybe not. But if I'm applying a civil standard, which is more reasonable preponderance of the evidence, I'd say that's abundantly clear. We have more than enough evidence that, there's definitely more evidence that it was January sixth than it was December anything. So I mean, I have no objection, and I do intend to introduce a motion to that effect tonight that we'll vote on and give you your pretty little bow, as you put it.
I'm asking if you can make that motion now.
As, as Chairman of the Board of Assessors, would I get a motion to that effect, please, Kevin?
I move that we revise the sending date of the bills for the quarter three and quarter four property tax for the twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year to January sixth, as opposed to the current date of December thirty-first, and with, December thirtieth, my apologies. And that we get, we bake that official with an appropriate motion to that effect, and knowing that the effects, that it will move the abatement due date to April thirtieth, as well as the due date for the payments to May first.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it. Maybe we should shorten it. I don't, I don't know who took it, oh, I see.
Maybe it was long, I apologize.
Is, is there any, any more comment? Christine, Kevin?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is three, three to zero, in favor.
Thank you for that pretty bow. All right. Okay, um, going to number eight. Was the Board of Assessors competent from July the first, two thousand twenty-two to December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two? The answer there is yes, however, it's a yes, and a, it's a yes, however. Uh, was the Board compliant with requirements identified in eight thirty C M R fifty-eight point three point one and/or uh, other requirements as determined by the Mass D O R Commissioner? Oh, I'm at the very end. So the answer there is, is, is based on the C M R, um, just to kind of go backwards. So Kevin and Christine were both appointed by the Select Board into a vacancy onto the Board of Assessors. They ran for office for the first time, uh, uh, and, and were elected in May of two thousand and twenty-two. So both came on the Board around the same time, uh, which was approximately, uh, five months before these values were turned into the Commonwealth. Mr. Lartart, as a long-serving member, you're the one with the experience, you also were the one who kind of actively recruited, um, Christine and kind of helped get the word out there to get people on the Board. You have completed your course with Mass D O R, as confirmed by Mass D O R. Mr. Fish has completed his course with Mass D O R, as confirmed by Mass D O R. Christine has not completed her course with Mass D O R. However, Christine is allowed to operate in the capacity as an assessor, provided that that course is completed within two years of, of appointment or election. It is Christine's intention, as we all are aware, to not seek reelection this term. Uh, and so Christine has indicated that she will not be completing, uh, that course, uh, however. The standards identify that she's allowed to operate, uh, for up to two years without that being completed. So the, it's, so the answer is, is the Board of Assessors competent? The answer is yes. However, I think for our purposes, um, only your signature and only Kevin's signature, um, are, are considered valid or, or count. That follows. Okay. What, number nine. Uh, what was the process that the Board of Assessors undertook to perform their duties as outlined in the Town Charter as it relates to fiscal year twenty-three property valuations and tax assessments? A, did the Board of Assessors analyze fiscal year twenty-two property values and assessments alongside fiscal year twenty-three values and assessments and consider variances or differentials? The answer is no. Do guidelines or, or requirements recommend or require such analysis? The answer there is a no, however, it's also, uh, it's not required. That, that's probably the clearest answer, not required. And then the next part, B, does the Board of Assessors consider impact of tax assessment increase during the usual process of property valuations and tax assessments? The answer there is also no. So I think I wanna pause here for a second, um, and, and if we can just discuss this one a little bit. So on this point, while it seems clear that Department of Revenue, in our conversation with them, said you cannot consider impact when identifying, um, property value. However, it seems pretty clear that had the Board considered the impact, that there, that there would have been an opportunity to, A, look into whether or not an error had occurred, or B, communicate with residents far more effectively, um, using, using the process known as an impact letter, and be able to be about three weeks, it wouldn't have been too much more time, but it would have been three weeks, uh, prior to the end of the year, and with such an impact letter, would have been able to be communicated, or some form of public meeting could have occurred to identify that such increases, uh, would occur. Is it the Board's intention to consider a policy update, um, to incorporate some of these, uh, concerns that have come up? If you guys wouldn't mind just speaking to that a little bit. If you guys wouldn't mind just speaking to that a little bit?
We've actually spoken about that, about using some comparative analysis in the future, using Excel spreadsheet, property values, tax, I'm sorry, tax assessment, actual tax, tax this year versus last year. We've discussed that, and we're hoping to get it done.
Any other members want to add any more information there?
Just very briefly, I've, we have had discussions. I've spoken with Rich on this, and I actually also spoke with the Principal Assessor with regards to the possibility in the future of setting up some kind of tripwires, so that if we do have a radical differential like we did with the case of the lake properties, that it would come up more clearly. A part of the problem we had, and I've said this from the beginning, is yes, there was issues with communication. And I do think a part of that is, is as Mr. Jeffries noted, with the, the history of the Principal Assessor position, since it came in, some of this predates when I came on the Board, but I mean, it's just, it's been difficult because there's been a lack of continuity, and I think that may have been a factor in this. Doesn't excuse it, but it does at least provide some explanation for it. Because it seems like even before I was on the Board, we were in a state of constant transition from RRG to, you know, Chris committed, it just, I mean, the longest single tenure was what, 13 months at that point? And I do think that was a major impact. And I would say that, you know, going forward, now that we seem to have someone that is settled into the position and is going to be there for the long term, hopefully we can have the time, once we get through the, you know, the current situation with all the abatements, we can really sit down and start to reformulate those policies going forward.
Chris, any other comments on this point? Okay, and then the final kind of question is, in, in the event that error, either clerical, professional, or procedural are found, what are the potential remedies for both the affected residents and the town? And I think that we have unfortunately come to no good answer on this one, that the laws favor the municipality.
Thank you. Let me, let me restate this question. The booth reminded me my mic was not on. In the event that either, in the event that error, either clerical, professional, or procedural are found, what are the potential remedies for both the affected residents and the town? I think the answer to this one is, is unfortunately that the laws favor municipalities not making errors. And so, you know, there are multiple provisions of law that say that if the town identifies a clerical error, it can go back in time and, and, and charge people more taxes, which just seems outrageous to me, that there's, you know, if, if the town by error admits something from a property card, catches it within three years, that the town can go back and charge people more taxes? That there seems to be, the laws are clearly designed to favor. I will say the government does one thing well. It protects its bottom line. That's about all, no, I wouldn't say that's about all it does well, but it does that exceptionally well. And the laws are clearly designed to protect municipalities from saying, if we say you owe this much, this is what you owe, and this is what we're going to collect. So there don't seem to be a lot of forms of remedy built into the law that allow any kind of change in process. The only way that residents seem to be able to affect the change of their property is through the solo abatement process. And we have not identified through DOR, through our lawyers, any other way to be able to remedy any other issue. Now with this highlights then for the Board of Assessors, and I'll offer as a comment, and I know I haven't said many comments tonight, I would offer as a comment that it seems exceptionally important that before we get to that point of giving out these bills and invoices and valuations to people, that the Board finds ways to really double check and triple check yourselves. Because once those things are finalized and go out, there's really not a, there's no way to pull them back, unless you accidentally sit someone the wrong year, and even then, you know, there really don't seem, there clearly are no ways to reevaluate a whole town. And, and then we are stuck, well, I wouldn't say stuck, but it is stuck. We're stuck in a situation where residents are feeling as if the town that they love has screwed them over. We're in a situation where, you know, where people are where they're at. I mean, people aren't happy. And they're not happy because they feel like, hey, we elected people to, to look out for us, and they didn't do it. And, and while that's a fair criticism, I think we all understand that when you're five, eight months into a job, I mean, you're probably, and I know being a selectman, it took me at least a good year to even get the cycle of, what, like, what does OPEB mean? You know, it took, it took a while to kind of learn it. So I think it's, I don't think anyone expects that we're going to get subject matter experts into a role within six to eight months. However, I think Mr. Lartart, what I'm saying is that there's a clear need for there to be some kind of process by policy in which you guys are reviewing and analyzing, because if that would have occurred, we would have, we would not have needed to expend as much money we've expended, the man-hours, the time, the heartache that people have gone through themselves, the hours that has been spent on mortgage companies, people not knowing where they're going to, how they're going to pay their bills, you know, a lot of things could have been prevented, if there would have been a policy in place that would have accounted for the finality of, of valuations when they're submitted.
Michael Ray, I think that's so important.
Microphone.
I think that's so important, and I think you have, you will realize when you look at the schedule, and I think, also, that is a very good point. In less than two years, I've been through four Principal Assessors. But the key thing that I wanted to mention is, this all happens, if I understand the calendar correctly, in the month of December. You see various things happen up to December, but it's like they don't push the button, I'm not sure Heather would know this, probably, they don't push the computer button to run it all. I almost think into the second week or something, and then comes out enormous amount of data. It's Christmas time, and I think that what has to be done ahead of time is actually to hire someone to help the Board of Assessors, who are three people. We have, I'm not going to be there, and Jack Rabbit probably will make this happen. They almost need, it wouldn't cost very much, some assistance in analyzing that data. So Kevin used the word, if there was some, I don't remember, significant change in the numbers, he asked for a tripwire. I think even just a modest, moderate change in the numbers, but to get that, I don't think you can get it from three people. To be truthful, I'm not going to be here, and maybe Jack can do wonders, I don't really know, but it's an enormous amount of data. And maybe the summary sheet is terrific, I don't know. I really nev-, okay, here's, here's, I never saw it. If there's a summary sheet.
It seems as though the mass appraisal system is not designed, I mean, I know, I'm, speaking with residents, I know that everyone wants to get a system that's more specific, that, you know, should be accounting for this, should be accounting for that. The reality is, it's meant to be broad. It's meant to be a broad assessment. It's meant to be wrong. It's just meant to be within the range, if that makes sense. So it's not meant to be a really exact valuation of your house. It's meant to be within a, really, a 20% range, 90 to 110%. I mean, that's a big range.
Maybe COVID is the thing that explains 80% of this, because people came from the city, wanted to live not only in Lunenburg, where our prices went, they wanted to live where you live. They wanted to be able to look at the lake. I mean, it makes sense. I don't, I-
It does.
Maybe it's somewhat COVID, but I, I still think somebody like I should have been introduced somehow to, to, to some kind of spreadsheet. I like numbers. I like numbers. I like what Carl does. I redid those numbers last Sunday, just to make sure that I understood what he was-
Yep.
Oh, anyway, I'm sorry, go on. I don't know what time it is.
Yeah, well, you know, I think, I think it seems-
Those three people can't, cannot do that at Christmas time.
I think it seems though, as though, you know, part of, part of the idea behind process and policy is that it's not dependent upon who's sitting in the seats. You know, it's a process that allows new people to come in and fall into them, so that way you can learn and grow. You know, clearly, I, you, I've said several times, you know, my, my title outside of here is Vice President of Asset Management. I manage property all over the Commonwealth. And what happened in 2020 was that people did leave the city. They did leave those condos at $700,000, and they moved out west, because if you could work from home in a more comfortable environment, why not do it? That really did occur. But then it seems as though what, what the Board of Assessors may want to create policy around is, you know, although you have, you know, a 12-month window of when you're supposed to be looking at sales, you know, from January 1st to December 1st, that what the Board, as I've learned, could also do is you can dip, you, the Board could have dipped six months into 2020, and they could have dipped six months into 2022. And had the Board have done that, or had the Assessors have done that, you would have seen a bigger anomaly, and saying, maybe this one year really is an outlier. You know, and so the Board did have tools, it didn't exercise, but it had tools. And so perhaps, perhaps a way to do this in the future is that when you see that outlier, when, when the Board sees that property values have gone up past a certain threshold, that you then require an internal process to do more analysis.
Exactly. I couldn't agree with you more, but Lou was on that Board for quite a long time, so he would know more about when these figures, I don't, I agree, it's-
And I know I kind of talked to two members, so I want to shut up first.
It sounds very, it sounds like a reasonable plan.
Yeah, just a couple things. Well, we never had an anomalous situation like this too when I was on the Board, but if it's any consolation to people going forward, and Jack Rabbit is, does get seated on the Board, people who know Jack Rabbit know that he will analyze data until your eyes glaze over and you pass out. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So first, to the point that I just want to dispel the notion, I really want to clearly dispel the notion, for me at least, that COVID was the cause of this, is everybody in the Commonwealth, 351 municipalities suffered COVID. And when I've asked anybody who would listen, has there ever been a time when 10% of a population, 10% of the residents got hit with this kind of increase, still, crickets? The only thing DOR said is that, we don't evaluate that, we don't look into that. Sure, I understand that, they probably don't look into that. There's lots of things they don't look into, because that's not really, they're in oversight, that they just want to keep the wheels moving, right? So, but nobody else can express. There were people, there were lots of towns and cities that have lakes and waterfront and oceanfront and bayfront, you know, in all parts of the Cape. I don't, I haven't read anything where somebody went up like this, so I don't think it was COVID. When we look at the questions, the core questions from that document, I want to express that number two, number four, and number six, especially number two and four, come down to the processes that the Principal Assessor undertook. And I will reiterate, I don't know, I think this is the fourth or fifth time, something that has been brought up in public comment again, is that in order to know whether the processes that were followed were error-free or judgment-free, we need to know and have an explanation of what the process is. I will reiterate again tonight that I want a presentation with no interjections, not an interrogation of the Principal Assessor, where he does a presentation where he formally goes over all the pieces that were done. It's a repetitive process. This year, it's going to happen the same way as it did last year, just the data changes. So just show us, all the pages open, show your work, I just want to see what was done. Only then can we know how we got here. You know, it's fine to listen to anecdotal interviews and blaming people who have email companies that haven't been here for three years, and all this, and that, that's all fine. Maybe that even some of it's relevant. But the DOR approved everything, including the ASRs, from those years that we went through four assessors that Christine has lived through in the last three. So they approved it, so something was fine, so what isn't fine now? That's what we want to know, and that's still what's, to me, that's still what's missing. And that's a key component of what's missing. You want me to find out why the clock isn't working, but you won't let me take the back off the clock to see what, how it's working? So I would still ask for that. And I'd still ask for the historical data from FY19 in, in digital format to do an analysis, not just the last two years, what I have, some, I, residents have provided me with one more year. I'm like, I think the town should provide that, and one thing I would ask the Board of Assessors to do is adopt a policy that every year, you keep a spreadsheet in whatever format you find fit, year after year, for historical records, so that if this ever happens again, at a moment's notice, we can pull up 10 years of spreadsheets and say, here, now you can look at all the data for as long as, as long as you want to go, and no one's searching through papers.
But Lou was, you were on this Board, if nothing ever happened like this, right? And that's-
I want to be clear that I'm talking about, not this Board of Assessors, I'm not talking about the three members, I'm talking about the Board of Assessors in the conceptual model that there is a Board of Assessors. I'm not, I'm not assigning blame that the three of you did this, because you're right, it's historical, it goes back forever. Because we relied on a, on the CAMA system, the state's CAMA system that is now outdated and shut off, but we never saved copies of any of the data that was on of those. So.
If I could address that briefly, there was, there was a little bit of trepidation when, when there was the, the whole changeover to the new CAMA system, that, you know, is all the data going to go over? So, you know, so there was a system there that had it all, but something got lost in translation, but I was gone by then, so.
Yeah. I would offer that, you know, adding to Mr. Lonzo's comments, you know, I mean, I, I do believe, I know, you know, reasonable people disagree, I do believe that a large component of this was predicated by COVID. I do. I think that COVID resulted in the, COVID created the opportunity for people to sell their houses, houses at exorbitant rates. I mean, you know, we, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I haven't been on this planet for 60, 70 years, but for all the people who have, I mean, can you think of a time and what someone's house went up and doubled in value in four years? I mean, it, it, that's not normal, right? I mean, that's not a normative thing. I mean, can you think of a time when, when everyone selling their homes was getting $40,000 to $80,000 above asking, or more? I mean, you know, so I, I do believe that COVID played a part in this, but certainly there was more to it. You know, we did have, we did have other communities in the Commonwealth that has substantial increases in their property values, but I think that what Mr. Lonzo was really getting at was, you know, even if you exclude all that stuff, the bottom line here is that you're talking about a small portion of the town, 10%, roughly-
Exactly.
-that absorbed 100% of the taxing increase. And so what can we do as a community that maybe that was justified? I'm not saying it was. I, I don't believe it was necessarily, but maybe that was justified. Maybe it was. But is it fair to a resident to get a tax bill on January the 20th that tells them that's due in 10 days, that says, by the way, you owe an extra $1,800 or $3,000? I mean, you know, so what can be done in the future that kind of looks for these issues before they become a crisis? Because to me, this crisis was 100% avoidable, preventable, if, if we would have had better controls to catch this stuff.
And I think that, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think that both Kevin and I, in different words, said the same thing.
Yep.
He said a tripwire. And I didn't honestly talk as much, nearly as much about COVID as I did about what to do in December, I don't know if I'm right in the December part, let's assume I am. You know, there's got to be a process. You started your next sentence with a process, and-
Yep. What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for from the Board, and I, and I want to pick up what Mr. Lonzo said, is I think that the Select Board has been extraordinarily supportive to the Board of Assessors. So now we're, so our request then to you is we have three questions that we really need you guys to answer. We need you guys to dig into what that process was. And I'm talking into you as well, Rich. We need you guys to really dig into these questions that we're having trouble answering, because you're the ones who have the oversight and can answer them. So as Mr. Lonzo said, two, four, and six, what was the decision-making process the Principal Assessor undertook to achieve fiscal year 23 property values? principal assessor undertook to achieve fiscal year twenty-three property values and assessments? Number four, or the second question, was the process the principal assessor undertook consistent with professional standards and norms? And then, Mr. Lonzo, was your next reference to six about historical error?
Yeah.
And then was there historical error or decision that contributed to increases in any index for fiscal year twenty-three valuations and assessments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to comment on number one, and I want to make it clear, my position. It's not the position of the Board. We've never discussed it. It's my position. I am not looking for the Board of Assessors to answer the process question. I am looking for an employee of the town who holds the title of Principal Assessor, who did the assessment, to provide us with a presentation of the assessment. I don't want it to be secondhand through the Board of Assessors, who don't do the assessing, that he does. They do an overview and an oversight of that position, but they don't do the assessing. I want this process from firsthand from the person doing it. That is my request.
And I, Mr. Lonzo, I think I can support that. I think that what I'm also asking the Board is that you guys need to know this too. And it would be helpful to us if you guys get these answers, you guys vet these answers, you work with the principal assessor so that way we can get what Mr. Lonzo was requesting. But we really need you guys to take this on full throttle and help us get here. Now, I know that you guys have a bunch of assessments to get through too, so I'm asking, we're asking for a lot. So tell me how to help.
I'm not sure.
Okay. I think for tonight, this is probably a good, a good stopping point. I know that we have, we definitely can talk for more and have more to do, but I just want to pause here, give everyone the opportunity here amongst ourselves to kind of clarify what we need from each other. I'm sure we want to give each other a couple atta boys here, so. So I just want to make sure we have the opportunity before, before we move on from this, you know, to ask or clarify.
I do think our, our communication sys, well, I do think our communication system leaves a lot to be desired. I'm just going to leave it at that.
I know many, I think all of you guys have gotten some personal opinions from me. I know, I know they don't always go over well. I know, and so I will say that I do not mean to personally offend any one of you guys. I think that I know that my energy sometimes can be offensive, and I'm more direct with you guys individually, so I just, do I want to clear on that?
I honestly think it's more the communication break, even, even the invitation to this meeting. Four people said to me, that was the invitation you got? I mean, it was a notice from our secretary who said there would be this meeting with no description of this whatsoever. I didn't know. Anyway, and I was to be here at seven thirty. I walked in and you all had been here since, I don't know. The communication system, I don't know how to fix something like that. I think there's so much stress on the people that are doing the acting. They don't have time to construct any kind of communication that kind of works. I think was, isn't it Kevin who keeps on saying it's communication is a major thing? Or did I put those words into your mouth?
I think I heard him say that.
At any rate, I think it's very hard when you, you don't hear. We're doing better.
Okay, good. Is it helpful with Mr. Franco? I know that that was a conversation that was a little bit forced down your throat by me, but is it helpful, is it helpful with Mr. Franco?
You know, I think it would, it could have been helpful. I forgot what, oh, I thought maybe he could have been the conduit between Nate, but then it turned out you were really the conduit to Nate. That's been a huge, I didn't even know there was a man called Nate until, and he came from my hometown, until a week ago. And someone said, well, he's been, it's just, I mean, I can't tell you, whatever.
Mr. Franco.
I just want to say, I think going forward, it'll be smoother. I acknowledge my error last week, sort of barging into the Board of Assessors meeting, and I think that procedural point, I received it well. I did screw that up, and, oh, I think we remitted it after about eight or nine minutes. What happened after that was a little bit prolonged, but I do acknowledge that error, that initial error, so there's no defending it, so I'm not going to try to.
Thank you.
I guess, just saying, talking about going forward and reformulating the policy. I say, I think the biggest problem we had with setting up these kinds of policies is anyone coming into a new position. We know it takes time to grow into the position. I mean, I know I'm still in the process of learning the the ins and outs of the Board of Assessors, and I've been on it for, what, a year and a half, what, you know, whatever. And the principal assessor position has had the same problem. You know, we have one come in for a few months, we have that one leave, we have another one come, and I think that the problem is, is we haven't, I'm hoping that going forward, we have the continuity, that we can sit down and, you know, we'll have the basic wheel, you know, the basic skids grease, so then we can start to formulate these policies so that we can smooth the transition going forward and make these things simpler and processed. Because right now, I mean, we're flying by the seat of our pants right now because, you know, none of the principal assessors we've had have really had the time in the role to get used enough to the primary elements of the role to be able to understand, to make the recommendations that the Board would need to act upon, to really formulate and promulgate these kinds of policies. I don't say that the Board has no responsibility to it, we absolutely do. But I do think that, you know, both Chris and I are both relatively new to the Board. We've had new assessors. I mean, I've, I've been on the Board shorter time than her. I think I've only been through three assessors, but it still holds true. You know, I think the biggest problem is, is if we can just get some continuity and we can get through, you know, the current crisis, so we can actually stop and breathe for two seconds, so we can look at some of this, I think that that will be the the key component as far as being able to reformulate those policies going forward.
Could I just ask one question in case it helps, helps the situation? This person, Mr. Kramer, I think, with his two, two workers, they've done a lot of property, but they're going to give something extra.
It would be best for me not to talk.
Not to come in. Because if it affects the way they can describe, maybe he's already done this, they can describe their own property to make their case for an abatement more accurate. If, if you believe in whatever it is Nate is contributing, you must believe in it because it's holding things up.
Yes.
And, and, and.
I do.
And kind of don't look at yourselves and don't look at us. We can't do it until he, so you must believe in it. So there must be something valuable there. And if ever it could help the people, if it's some kind of a process, I don't know what, it would certainly be nice if they knew what this magical stuff is.
I, I think that, you know, as, in this role, you know, I have an interest in understanding what's happening there. I mean, the Select Board did hire this person, and so, you know, we do have an interest in
Oh, you hired, you guys hired him?
With, yes.
I never knew.
So we do have an interest in what and how he's working. I think that the missing piece is.
Oh, I see.
I think the missing piece is the coordination between his work, your Board, and CJ, that that's where all that needs to come together. I can't influence that, but understanding what his process is, and I've spoken to all of the people who are doing the work, because I've, I've been trying to, you know, not realizing that they're all doing it to get them on this other, other part of the work. But I, I do believe that, you know, you guys need to be the ones that get information, not me. You guys need to be the ones that make decisions. So while I may have direct awareness talking with a vendor, it is fully outside of my role as a selectman, other than working with the town manager to help, you know, oversee, you know, that someone who's doing the work that we're paying for is actually doing the work. But as far as that, his work product, that comes to you guys, not to us. So I want to kind of wrap up here tonight. I think, I want to give Select Woman Soroka the opportunity to offer any comments, and she has them, Mr. Latarte to offer any comments, and for the town manager as well. I know, you know, and if there's anything else that needs to be said, if we can take a couple more minutes and then, and then wrap up.
I just want to speak to the fact that I have no idea what you're talking about in regards to this person and what he's going to offer, just so that everyone understands. I am not, I'm not informed in that respect as well. So we all know the same amount. He knows more. She knows more, and possibly Tom knows more. No, not even Tom.
I know nothing about.
So we, I'm at a loss here as well.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
Okay. But it, it's so helpful to know that we're not going to have a meeting every Tuesday for four hours Thursday. I've got my whole family geared up, and I said to my husband today, don't tell them that it was canceled. You know, it's been kind of stressful. And I thought, oh, just give me today, you know. But all the things that happen to you on a weekly basis, well, you put them all on hold, right?
It's also moving, Tare. You know, the conversation I had with this Kramer was.
I would be very very anxious to read Mr. Kramer's report, not only for the numbers he's going to be generating, the evidence, a big adjustments he's going to be generating, but what his recommendations are. And I happen to be a numbers guy, I like numbers, and I like to analyze this year versus last year. We just never really had that issue before because the taxes, the, the numbers came in pretty consistently. And they might have been wrong at that time, but we really weren't aware. But I would be very anxious to hear what he has to say.
Okay. Mr. Lonzo.
And thank you for getting us together.
Well, you're welcome. I know it needed to, I know it needed to wait a little bit longer than what the initial request was, but I do appreciate you guys being here with us. I do think it's been very helpful to have you here. I want to give the town manager any.
I think the. Thank you to the Board of Assessors for attending, and I think this was a productive workshop and the presentation and the materials as well. Hopefully brings to light some of the process that was followed and questions answered.
Mr. Chair, I actually do have one last comment, and that is, I want to echo what Ms. Cosgrove said and what we started out with, which is communication to the residents. If the Board, as you come up with decisions and you come up with schedules and you get data, please let the residents know somehow, either through the office or on the website or something. Just let people know. That's part of the anxiety that I think a lot of people are feeling, that they just want to know what the next process is so they don't miss a deadline, so they know how to prepare and know what the steps are, how they can participate, if it's even allowed. Thank you.
Heather, will Town Council clarify? We've all agreed that the, the tax bills went out late, as far as we can tell, and that pushes up those dates that Mr. Lonzo said initially, that we read someplace together. Can you or Town Council make that clear? Because they need to know that more than even I do.
I thought that was made clear tonight, that the, the deadline.
Well, it was verbally, but I don't know. I kind of like it in hard copy.
The deadline is May first.
We should put it, if we can, we should put it on the website.
We will. But I want to make sure for the, everyone listening right now, that it's clear.
Yes.
That they're due May first.
Thank you.
And that extends.
It'd be good for them to have a meeting.
So before, I know that everyone's ready to go, but we're about to end our meeting tonight, so let's, let's give ourselves a couple more minutes here. Ms. Latarte, would you mind adjourning your meeting?
I would like a motion to adjourn.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Latarte.
The Board of Assessors meeting is.
All right. So this is the last thing on our agenda, so what we're going to do is we're going to take some public comments. I just want to announce our upcoming meeting schedule is April the eleventh. We are not meeting on April the eighteenth. We will be meeting on April the twenty-fifth. I will not be here for that meeting, May the second. Then we have annual town meeting coming up on May the sixth and annual elections on May the twentieth. All right. Do we have any public comments this evening from the town manager? Any from the public? Yes. If you were like a chair.
Donna Fortune fifty Hemlock Drive. Rena Swayze was hired as an interim Principal Assessor for the town of Lunenburg on twelve nine twenty twenty-one. At the one twenty twenty twenty-two Board of Assessors meeting, the minutes state that Rena was, quote, "working on various land splits." That work would have been for the assessment date of one one twenty twenty-two, which would result in FY twenty-three tax bills. Since CJ Carroll was ratified as the Principal Assessor at the three fifteen twenty twenty-two Board of Assessors meeting, how was the transition of work between Rena and CJ done? If so, how long and what work, sorry, did, did they work together for some time to ensure a smooth transition? If so, how long and what work was already done by Rena Swayze and used for the FY twenty-three taxes? Thank you.
What came out in the, in the interview was that Rena didn't do any work related to the actual tax assessments for the year. That's what, and that, and that when they, and that when she came on board, that they, that she was available to meet with CJ, that they were kind of, I think they had one week of overlap, was it one, two weeks? They had a little bit of overlap with each other, and then Rena was available for any calls, and she had indicated that she did not receive any calls.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments from the public? Yes.
Hi. Marilyn Jewell, twenty seventh way in Lunenburg, of course. I, I guess the one thing I don't understand, all the years I've worked in business, and we hired somebody relatively not having a lot of experience as CJ, okay? And then he gets to do this process for this town involving thousands and thousands of dollars and a lot of people. He was not mentored by anybody in town, by his boss. I assume you are his boss, you hired him. You never looked at the numbers? You never saw the report before it went out and all these tax bills went out? You never saw that?
What were you talking about?
For the tax bills. You never saw a report on finance manager?
So part, I will say, part of the process, as we understand it, is that while internally the Board of Assessors can do a review of one fiscal year to the other by parcel, and I think this Board is encouraging that to happen going forward, it is not an expectation or requirement to come up with property values to actually do any comparison to what the impact is going to be on residents. It's just not required. And, and I don't, and the town manager is not an assessor. I don't, I don't know if the town manager is, while she has many skill sets, I don't think the town manager is the right person to oversee the, the details of what happens, which is why we have an elected Board who's supposed to provide that.
Well, it's not so much the details. You don't have to see the details. I mean, you can take a look at a report and see an area was targeted, the lakes targeted. That was, that's how I feel. We were targeted.
Mr. Chair.
Year.
I will say, I want to, I want to be clear. I've mentioned this a couple times, I think, over the course of the few months. It is not, while the town manager hires, along with the, the ratification of the Board of Assessors, the principal assessor, the town manager does not have a role in the assessment or tax bills at all. They really don't have a role.
Okay.
Her, her oversight of town assessor was, or the principal assessor would be a qu. Her oversight of town assessor, or the principal assessor, would be equivalent to the oversight of the police department in ministerial functions. But no one would ask her, "How's the investigation for this crime going?" That's not the details that she gets involved in. Similarly, in tax assessments, the...
It's yours.
I'm being played off. I'm being played off.
It's probably Perry calling.
But, so the town manager doesn't have any role. There's nothing that goes to her. It goes to the Board of Assessors, gets approved. The principal assessor sends it to the DOR. The Board of Assessors approves it in the DOR site, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and then it becomes final, once that happens, and the town manager hasn't seen anything, nor do they see anything. So I just want to be clear of the responsibility, because a lot of people are asking the same question, and there really is no oversight.
I know that.
Yeah. The town manager oversees, like, did the submissions occur? It's about that. It's kind of that broad. Like, did you submit the submission on time? It's that type of stuff. As I've gone through this process, you know, the way that I kind of now think about the principal assessor is I almost think of it almost like a quasi-agent of Mass DOR that the town has to pay for. That they really do work directly with Mass DOR, not so much with, you know, the town. Like, the DOR provides that level of professional support to them. They're the ones who consult with them. They're the ones who review it. So it is kind of a really strange role, as I've gone, as I've learned. But I see it more like a quasi-agent of Mass DOR that we pay for.
Okay. Okay. That answers that question. The other question that was presented to me, as far as this May 1st goes, are we going to send anything out to people to let them know about this? Is anybody...
Well, that's what we were just saying. And I think they agreed to give an analysis, a calendar.
If you're talking, if you're referencing, will anything be mailed? The answer is no. So it's talked about here, it'll be put on the website, there'll be, you know, maybe we'll put something as a public notice in the paper if we can, but that's about the extent of it.
Okay. If something could be put in a ledger, that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
That would try to help people.
We try to do different media outlets for outreach like that, such as the website, the ledger, public access, Facebook.
Maybe Facebook.
Just because people receive their information different ways.
I think that you make one of the best points tonight, which hasn't, we've had so many things to talk about. We've had so many things to talk about, that this organizational structure of principal assessor, town manager, Board of Assessors, I think is a very poor organizational structure. Because we're all asking the same thing.
Yeah.
And did I, I never even saw CJ until he was here. And it's just, it's organizationally, really, Michael Ray, you've seen a lot of organizations, and Lou worked with this one for years. I don't know how people stood it.
He hasn't been at any of the meetings either. I think CJ has not presented himself to any of the meetings, you know? And I think a lot of people feel very uncomfortable about that, too. I, myself, being one of them. I think he should be here to represent...
I don't know what you...
Town government is like interdependent parts, you know? It's like interdependent parts. That it's not, it's not a straight, you know, top-down structure like many, like the civilian, like the business world is, a clear, you know, CEO. It's a lot of interdependent, interdependence. So like, you know, certain areas we have oversight, some we don't. But we all have to kind of work together. Carol from the school committee coming before us, you know, I've met with the school committee, you know, or Carol several times in private meetings, we have one set up for this Friday. We have to work together. But as far as, you know, do we have any control over what happens in the schools? No. Zero. But we have to find a way to work. So it is a lot of interdependent parts like that. Similarly, like roles like building commissioner, you know, it's just, it is different. It's complicated. Every year, we go into the schools, Lou and I, we have an appointment scheduled for this Friday, and, you know, it's the most challenging thing to try to explain to a bunch of high schoolers, you know, how your town is organized. Because it's, "Well, this role," but they don't really answer to...
You got it.
It is a little more, it is a little, it is a little different on the town structure.
I just feel that. CJ has put in a lot of responsibility on these three members, where he should be here answering some of these questions. And that's my personal opinion, but I know a lot of other people feel the same way as I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments tonight before we wrap up here? Looks like we got, how many coming up tonight? One, two, three? How many more public comments?
I'll be brief.
And we promise not to say anything.
John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive. I would just caution the Board of Assessors that if asking for a 90 days, an extra 90 days basically pushes you into Q1 of FY24, before we even get started on the changes or whatever that has to happen. So now, all of a sudden, we're now into the next fiscal year, so 90 days may be a long time. I understand you'd like that amount of time to do hearings or whatever, and maybe that's the right thing to do. But the people that are shouldering this burden will now shoulder it into next year. And so that's, you know, I would encourage you to do things faster. I would also encourage you to have hearings, to listen to people who have data, and have new data, by the way, because now it's been 90 days since the start, and we've all learned a lot more. So I would encourage you to do something, do it faster, and listen to the people who actually pay the bills of the town. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Renee, I'm key, 6 Iris Court. Three questions. One I think is easy. Will the residents be given the report from the re-inspection, from Nate?
Good question.
Will the residents be given...
I can't answer that question. That would go to the Board of Assessors.
Oh, then we probably, I don't know why.
Renee, you can also just...
Because it leads into the second question. If their abatement is declined, the next step would be the ATB.
Correct.
So Nate's report could strengthen their case for that, but then it leads into my question about timing. There's a lot of timelines, moving timelines. I know there's timelines around filing with the ATB. This extension to May 1st, does that, we may not know, maybe question for Town Council. Does that, because that's a DOR thing, right? State-level ATB filing. Does that timeline now shift accordingly?
For the 90-day period, so if you submitted an application tomorrow, your 90-day clock starts from there, and that clock for the ATB is from there.
But if you submitted before February 1st, like a lot of people did, that clock starts for 90 days. We've now given them to May 1st.
No, that won't, for those applications that are filed, it wouldn't extend.
But they're not going to, you're not going to get through those in 90 days.
That's why the...
From February 1st.
For extension.
Okay. And that would apply to filing to ATB.
My understanding is that your ability to file to ATB is predicated on a timeline for when you get a determination from the Board of Assessors.
No, actually, actually, I think if you don't get an answer within 90 days, it's...
Unless there's an extension.
Okay.
I mean, if they don't answer it, and there's no extension, then it's a tacit denial, at which point you have the ability to file with ATB.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. I want to make sure people don't miss that opportunity. And then when you meet, when will people find out about their abatement, how? The decision? When you guys review?
Honestly, until I have a more definitive timeline, I'm exactly over... Until we have, we have an estimated date of when we'll start receiving the information, is April 23rd. Tonight was actually the first time I had heard that date.
I mean more like, you meet tomorrow, you review my abatement. When will I hear that decision?
That's just it. Until we have that information, we're not able to consider the abatements until we have that second assessment and that report and information in hand. Once we have that information in hand, we're planning on meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays for four hours. Once we have that information in hand, we can have a better idea of what assessments will be done for which meeting.
I think, I'll attempt to answer. I think what her question is, at some point in the process, you will get, the Board of Assessors will get to a determination with an approval or denial of the abatement. I think the question is, once that decision is made, how will the residents find out? Now, I do know, and I'll hold on a second, Rich. I do know that once they're decided and they're logged, by state law, they have to be logged in an abatement book, and that book is public record. So I can't answer the first part about how you'll be notified, but once it's determined and it's recorded, it has to be recorded in an abatement book in some kind of physical or digital signing that is public record. And I would ask the Board of Assessors, as they happen, I wish they, instead of having it, go and request it every time, because I will do it every Monday, I would hope that weekly you will instruct your office to supply us with the latest abatement.
And I think, Mr. Latar, as you guys work on your process, as you discussed earlier, this is probably one of those errors that you should hit, is just identifying how residents will be informed of their...
I was about to tell you. Within 10 days, 10 working days, you will receive written notifications.
That's perfect.
As to approval or denial.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Do we have any other public comments this evening? And we have one, and Phyllis, two.
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. This, back to the subject of the principal assessor providing the information that's been requested over and over and over and over a couple times tonight. The town manager has told us that she's already requested that from the assessor. Could you please tell us when we could expect that information and/or the assessor in front of us to present his process?
I've not received that. So I will have to follow up with the...
So there was no date on the request of when you wanted that from the assessor?
It was prior to the last...
No, no. I mean, when you asked him, you didn't say, "I'd like it by such and such a date." It's an open-ended question or request?
I asked him to provide it. We have not with a date attached.
Okay. Good at the next meeting. Could you please provide that date, please? And I'll leave that request there. The other thing I've brought up every time I've spoken, I've referred to, I don't believe that the assessor followed the DOR standards. You reported tonight that the DOR said he did. Do we have that in writing from the DOR, or was that your opinion?
You want to keep going with your comment, Carl?
Okay, I will. Well, because every time I speak, I refer to the DOR standard, which I've read several times, and I'll read it again. In the standard, it says, "The total number of arms-length sales used in the analysis of all major use classes," which we are one, "should be at least 2% of all parcels in that use class, or 10 sales in that class." We only have eight sales in that class that were qualified.
I want to clarify, Carl.
Can I finish my, can I finish the DOR?
You can. Do you have a definition of a class, though? Because I think you're confusing class with index.
So the lakes are not considered a class?
I'm just asking if you have a definition of class.
No, not on the, no. Do you, sir?
Yeah, I do. I don't believe index equals class. I think class is referring to home type. So it's referring to, is it like a colonial? Is it a bungalow? Is it a ranch? That's a class.
Okay. So this does not, so, because even at the town meeting, we were told that 10 was the requirement.
Per class.
Referring to the lakes. So the lake, so index one is not considered a class?
That's my understanding, Carl. Correct.
Okay. You could have saved me a lot of talking four times ago when I referred to this requirement. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Public comments that are turning into questions? Public comments?
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Is it wise to have an onsite principal assessor when he's supervised by a volunteer board who, you know, humbly say, "They're not assessors. They didn't even see the paper, or they don't know what's going on." I mean, why wouldn't you use a firm like RRG, who has an abundance of people trained to do this? They do 10% of the work in the state, you said. Why would a town the size of Lunenburg employ a principal assessor? He's not supervised by the town manager, as you made abundantly clear. The assessors don't know what's going on.
The regulations, I've read them and read them.
Oh, I'm...
They really aren't clear on who supervises.
Chris, I have to stop you.
I'm, you know, I am not picking on you at all. I'm just saying, it just doesn't make sense to have an onsite principal assessor who ends up doing what this principal assessor did.
Okay.
Please reconsider going back to a firm.
Are there any public comments this evening finalized from the public? And this is going to be it after you. And then we're going to go to the Board and adjourn here tonight.
I'm sorry. I just thought of this. My name's Deborah Yower. I'm at 226 Sunset Lane. I'm just curious about the process of reviewing abatements. How is it that anybody can be denied when everybody had 135%? It just seems to me that amount is so high, it's so unreasonable. And yet, we're still talking about, well, we're going to do the abatement, and we're going to either approve or deny. And I know we're not here to answer questions, but think about, like, why are we going through? It's almost, if I get, and I hope I'm not hanging myself, if I get denied, I'm going to be outraged. Why would I get, you know, denied on 135% increase just on my land? One-third of an acre. And yet, it may happen, from what I'm hearing. So I really question what's happening, just generally. People seem to not be talking to one another. They don't know what one group's doing, who's in charge of who. And, you know, people's lives are at stake here. They're selling their houses. They're panicking. They're taking out loans. I just really am asking, how can we possibly say to these people, "We're not even, you're denied"? Why? Because three people sat around a table and raised their hand. Let me see, I read it, denied. This is systemic, and there should be a collective response, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair, because this is an, I like to end with an easy question.
Yes.
The answer to your question is, the abatement process is the only mechanism that's available.
I understand.
Well, that answers your question. As far as the denials, instead of pre-deciding what's going to happen, should you be denied, we should wait to see the abatement process, you know, process happen. Because I think worrying about what might happen is never healthy for anything. I understand the position that people are in, believe me. But, you know, there are three people that are here tonight who obviously care about what's going on, and are going to be faced with that, and we'll see. And that's also not the end of the line. I mean, you obviously have one more appeal after that, should things not go the way you want. But let's start with that.
I understand that. And I would love to move forward with a more positive attitude, but it's a little bit fearful for people on our side.
No, I think we all understand.
And I appreciate everything that's being done. I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate everything that you've said. But, you know, I'm having a hard time being positive and hoping for the best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening from the Board? I'm... Yep. Mr. Franklin.
Totally unrelated to this current issue. Say, say again.
Is there a pancake french for breakfast?
At the hour it is now, we should probably put in our orders.
Yeah.
I just want to say how thrilled I am with the, getting the senior tax relief to this point, and that it is going to be a warrant article. And I want to thank everybody that was directly involved, and thank you, the Board, for unanimously agreeing to put it on as a warrant article. But Mr. Alonso, the town manager, principal assessor, the finance director, Rich was at some of those meetings, Latar, it took, you know, it was a big effort, and it really is, Leo, I've said to a few people in town, that if this is the only thing I get done during a term, my term will have been a massive success, so.
Concur. Good job. I will also just offer, I want to thank everyone from the Board of Assessors for being with us tonight. I want to thank the Board, you know, we went into tonight, I think the estimate was 11:00 PM that we were going to end by. And so, no, it's really, I want to say, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, sticking it out tonight. I know I was late to the executive session, and so, you know, my colleagues have been here a little longer than I have. You know, these things are necessary. It's part of a community. You know, we have to work together. I think these, these conversations help us identify areas that we need to improve upon and areas where we can work better together. So I just want to again thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to thank the many people who joined via Zoom, all those who came and, and physically joined us this evening as well. Our next meeting again will be next week. The Select Board will not be meeting on the 18th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.